I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can remain standing, we have Erica Wakeling as our police chaplain will give us our invocation.
Let's pray together. Almighty God, we thank you for this time here tonight. We know that you love Santa Ana and we pray a special blessing upon this city. We pray for wisdom and unity for this group that is here tonight, these leaders of our city, and we pray that you would show them what is best for this city to be greater and greater and to care for those that are in it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. If I can have Friends of the Zoo, you know who you are, come on forward at this time, please. The Santa Ana Zoo is a very special place. You may know that originally when Mr. Prentice donated that land to the city, he used to live where the old saddleback used to be, and he'd look across at his land and say, you know, "We ought to have a zoo there for the children of Santa Ana." And he really liked monkeys, and so he said, you know, "The zoo has to have monkeys." And he put the 50-monkey requirement in there. "We have to have 50 monkeys at any one time. If we don't," his heirs can come back, and there's a deed restriction that says they can reclaim the zoo and take it back to the Prentice family. So we always have a few extra monkeys, but we have much more than that now. You know, the Santa Ana Zoo, I think, has really matured over the years, and under, you know, the leadership of the Friends of the Zoo and to my right, Armando Armenda, who's representing the Friends, you know, they've done so much. Let me just tell you a little bit about them. For the past 20, I mean, 43 years, Friends of the Zoo has been a nonprofit organization supporting the zoo. They've had fundraising activities. They're known as FOSAS, Friends of the Santa Ana Zoo. They donated over half a million dollars for capital improvements, renovations, services. In the past week, FOSAS received an $84,000 grant from the Macbeth Foundation to pay for the installation of long-lasting and fireproof synthetic palm thatchings at the zoo's exhibits. Last month, the Friends of the Zoo held their annual fundraising gala known as Zufari. Everybody dresses as somebody out there in the jungle or something, either explorers or a scientist or whatever the case may be, but just there alone, they raised over $100,000. And it was the biggest Zufari ever with 323 guests. So it, a lot of people in dress-up, and it's not Halloween. They also have many special events, popular summer concert series, sunsets at the zoo, I Remember Boo at the Zoo, with my kids going out there for Halloween many, many, many years. And by the way, that's coming up in October, so please, you know, be alert to that. Also, the biggest highlight has been the recent Ocelot exhibit, which was funded by Friends of the Zoo. And this last month, they'll be kicking off a fundraising campaign for a new giant river otter exhibit. And I know the city, we've already committed 1.4 million to that, and we need another 600,000, and that's, you know, part of the fundraising that Friends of the Zoo want to do. So, Armando, before I present you, a token of appreciation from the council for all the amazing work that you guys do, the volunteer hours, I mean, I remember when, you know, we were with Friends of the Zoo doing the train, and we bought it, you know, the city put in 40,000, you guys put in 40,000, we got it down from, you know, where was it? Santa's, yeah, up in the mountains, there used to be a Santa's Village or something like that, and they closed it down up in, and so we got the rail tracks down, and we got the little trains, and you go to the zoo today, and there's a beautiful little train, and it does a figure eight, and it takes you around, and it just adds to the activity and to the fun. So please, a few words, Armando.
First of all, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor Polito and council members. We really appreciate all your support at the zoo. We can't do it without the partnership of council members and the mayor, so thank you very much. You know, we look forward to a long and fruitful relationship with the city to make sure that we continue to improve and maintain the zoo for the future generations that I'm seeing here today, to make sure that, you know, it's something that's worthwhile and going. And again, please come out, become a member of the zoo, go out and enjoy it. I think you'll find that it's a very nice two to four hours to spend on a gorgeous day like yesterday, not today. So please come out and see what the city is doing for the city of Santa Ana. As a person who grew up here and who took his children to the zoo, it's very worthwhile. So I invite you to come out here, and you will see me out there, you possibly see a council member or even the mayor out there. So thank you very much, and we hope to see you out at the zoo.
How are the anteaters doing?
They're doing well and hopefully reproducing. We can always ask Kent over there.
He says they're reproducing. Is that the case?
Hopefully the case.
He says that is the case. What do you mean, three?
Three babies so far.
Well, three babies is three baby, yeah. We have to be up with the times. That's a doubling in population and then some. Are we gonna hold on to them or do they go to other zoos?
Other zoos.
Other zoos. Well, maybe we can trade them in for something, you know?
Monkeys.
How about a gorilla? A gorilla. Save up our anteaters. Look, for your fine, fine efforts to the entire organization, Friends of the Santa Ana Zoo, and appreciation of your unwavering support. Forty-three years is a long time, and I know you're gonna go strong on into the future and just make it such a wonderful zoo for Santa Ana, for the entire community. And also, I know there's a lot of out-of-towners that like to come in and enjoy the zoo, and that's a wonderful thing. Armando, thank you very much. Take care. Thank you. Armando. Now I'm going to ask Councilor Martinez. Vince, do you want to go next? I thought there was something with Sal.
We're gonna do this together.
Oh, you are? All right, come on down then, please.
Well, good evening. If I could please have the folks from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Rafael Nandel Flores, and I think other board members are here with you as well. If you put Hispanic bars, if you guys please join us. And I'm going to let Mayor Protem Sarmiento say some words, but what we're doing here today is really providing a proclamation in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, and we do this yearly. And so with that being said, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, and I think we're gonna shake some hands before he comes to the podium here.
You know, before I start talking about the recognition for the Hispanic Bar Association as we wind up our talk about the zoo, I want to make a quick plug because I know the mayor mentioned it, but it was done a little quickly. Ken, you're still in the audience. I want to make sure that everybody understood that we want to invite you all for an event on the 30th at the end of the month, September 30th. It's gonna be a kickoff for an exhibit that doesn't involve monkeys. I mean, so it's gonna be something very different, but it's this giant river otter. And if you guys see and have been to the zoo, this is probably at the nicest exhibit at the zoo, but it hasn't been addressed, it's fallen into decay these past few years, so it hasn't been touched up or rehabbed for about 28 years. But it's where the waterfalls are, and it's, you know, a lot of landscaping. I think when a movie was made there, a John Travolta movie was made there, right, Ken? I think it's called Old Dogs or something like that, which is what we feel like sometimes. But it's a beautiful, beautiful exhibit. It's gonna, we're gonna go underground, so we're gonna put a plexiglass window there so you can see the otter swimming underneath. So it's gonna look kinda like the, you know, some of the aquatic aquariums that you've gone and visited, but I think it's gonna be something great for the kids because you normally don't see these otters that are about five and six feet long, really playful, they have pretty faces, they look like little pups. But I think it's gonna be a great addition to the zoo because it's gonna be the, sort of, the center and the heart of the zoo, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna teach water conservation, the way we also treat water to make sure that it's clear, it's clean, and how we recycle water. Because now with the drought and everything else, we want to make sure that the exhibits are entertaining but at the same time educational. So I'm real excited because it's about a $2.1 million project, and we're already three-quarters of the way there. So to all of you who are zoo supporters with your families, please come out and do that. But I wanna, I do want to shift gears and talk about, you know, Hispanic Heritage Month, and the reason, you know, it was the council members', you know, invitation for me to come and say just a few words because for the Hispanic Bar Association that we're recognizing tonight, it's real special because they symbolize a lot of the work and advocacy that's done on behalf of Hispanics and Latinos in Orange County. So their bar association started out, I think it was called the Mexican-American Bar Association, right? And it's funny because I was just before Judge Frederick Aguirre, who was one of the founding members way back when, and it's funny, I remember the story that he used to tell me. He said that he and a couple of other young attorneys used to go have lunch at La Chiquita, which is right on Washington by Logan Park. They'd get together, have lunch, and they'd say, "Hey, you know, we're not many, we don't have many Latino attorneys or Mexican-American attorneys in the city or in the county. Let's get together and try to do something to help one another." And that turned into a very large organization. It's an organization that's very close to my heart because my wife was a former board member, my planning commissioner was a former board member, and I've been a member for many, many years. But what they do is they do advocacy on behalf of issues that affect the Latino community, and they do it for free. A lot of pro bono work is done by the, by these attorneys that represent the Hispanic Bar Association. They also advocate for diversity on the bench as well. So judges that we go before, judges that try cases in our communities, reflect the communities that they live in. So it's a real, real important thing that they do. They deal with social justice issues, and so it's a great group to have, leading issues on, you know, on justice, on fairness, on equality, and you have these folks that donate and volunteer their time. So to me, there's no more selfless way to spend your time than to advocate on behalf of those who have much less than we do. So I want to thank you all for everything that you guys do because I know my wife spent many hours on committees and attending functions and meetings, and I know that it's been a great source of benefit for the community for her to do that. So you as young attorneys, because you guys are all very young, your bar numbers must be very long, because I know mine's short. So that's how we, right? That's how we distinguish who's been an attorney for so long, because, you know, now they're up to six digits, I know, or maybe, who knows, maybe more. There's some people who have four-digit bar numbers, so they've been practicing for a very, very long time, but I just want to applaud them for the great work that they do. So why don't you join me all in giving them a big round of applause for everything that they do.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, and as he talked about, you know, the theme of Hispanic Heritage Month this year is honoring our heritage and building our future. And so it certainly, you know, as we talk about, you know, the history of the Orange County Hispanic Bar Association, and Mayor Protem Sarmiento was very eloquent in really highlighting, you know, the great work that they've done over the years. But today, we have three young, and I'm going to say young, gentlemen who are now really our board members and of course the president, leading the way for the Orange County Hispanic Bar. So we do have a proclamation, but before I begin that, as we all know, yearly I have always honored Hispanic Heritage Month because of the important role the Hispanics play across the United States. Today, there are over 50 million Hispanics in the United States, and the contributions that they have made in our community are significant, specifically here in Orange County and in the city of Santa Ana. And so it is a great honor and privilege to be here before all of you to honor such a great organization like the Orange County Hispanic Bar Association. And before I read all the whereas and just honoring, you know, the great accomplishments of the Orange County Hispanic Bar alike, for the president and possibly a couple of the board members to please say a couple of comments.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Tall.
Indeed. Old but tall. Thank you very much. My name is Rafael Nandel Flores. I am the president of the Orange County Hispanic Bar Association, and on behalf of the organization, we are honored to accept this proclamation. And I wanted to say a few words about our group's core mission. One of, our first core mission is increasing access to the legal profession for Hispanics. And, you know, not a lot of folks realize this, but Hispanics are the most underrepresented group among California's lawyers. The most recent report from the California State Bar, which was issued, I think in 2012, noted that while Hispanics comprise close to 40% of the state's population, only 4% of its lawyers are Hispanic. And so while we have made tons of progress, we have a long way to go, and we have a lot of work to do. And one of the things that we do is every year, we hold a dinner gala in March where we, where the purpose of that event is to raise scholarship funds for deserving law students. And to show you how far we've come, last year, we awarded $50,000 in scholarships to four deserving Hispanic law students, and we want to continue that, continue that trend. And another part of our core mission is increasing access to the justice system, and that has two prongs. One, which was mentioned a little bit earlier, was increasing the diversity of the California bench, and we're committed to that. We have a judicial evaluation committee where we interview judicial candidates when they seek our endorsement, and we're pretty strict about that. And also, we work to make sure that the Hispanic community and the community in general is getting good and premier client service regardless of their ability to pay. And so that's, and that dovetails into our pro bono efforts, and also our efforts to ensure that the services that people are receiving are good and that people are not being due by unscrupulous folks who say they're lawyers when they're not, because that is a big problem in our community, particularly in our immigrant community. So again, we're honored to accept this award, and I wanted to, I wanted to end by giving a personal thanks to the law firm where I practice, Ogletree Deacons, because they have been unbelievably supportive since I made the jump over to their, to this firm in August of 2012. They graciously allowed us to have our board meetings there every month, and, you know, they buy us all dinner once a month, and they have been, and they have generated, I mean, donated, you know, substantial amounts of money to the group for scholarships and other functions, and so I wanted to give a personal thank you to Ogletree Deacons. And then also, if any of my executive board members want to chime in. All right, thank you very much.
I really don't have much to say. You said it all. But, you know, I always tell, you know, students when I go to career day that they should always, you know, many of them always want to be attorneys. I'm like, "That's great." I don't say that much, you know, I didn't realize it's 4%, because I always tell kids today, "If you want to, you know, make a lot of money and have a great profession, now become a maritime pilot." You know, maritime pilots start off, start off their career making $350,000 a year, and not too many of our kids know that. And so it's a great profession. If I would've known, I would've become a maritime pilot making $350,000 starting a year. I don't think you make that as a starting attorney, but, you know, certainly it's a worthy cause and a great profession to be in, and it's a great pleasure and honor to really recognize. And before I recognize, you know, we do have our city attorney here, Sonia Cavallo, who, you know, is a managing, he was a partner, and the great work that she's done, and, you know, when we talk about Latinos and the profession of being an attorney, certainly Mayor Protem Sarmiento is also an attorney. Prior to that, we had our former Mayor Protem, Claudia Alvarez, who was certainly an attorney as well, and so it's great that we continue to recognize the great work that they do. I also wanted to highlight that our mayor, on September 27th, will be hosting the judges' barbecue at his home, and prior years, Mayor Protem Sarmiento and his lovely wife always did that event at their home, but I think after certain years, you know, they wanted to share it with Mayor Polito, and so Mayor Polito will be hosting that event on September 27th. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend, I'll be in San Jose, but with that being said, you know, Mayor, if you can join me and Mayor Protem Sarmiento to honor them and provide this proclamation of recognition for Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'm not gonna do all the whereas's, and I'll just focus on that, whereas the Hispanic American community is made up of hard-working entrepreneurs, public servants, elected officials who are working diligently to improve the quality of life and the nation as a whole. So now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Santa Ana hereby acknowledge and proclaim September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month and encourage all residents of Santa Ana to join us in celebrating the cultures and traditions of the Hispanic community in appreciation of National Hispanic Heritage Month. So guys, please, let's just give that to you, and I think we're gonna take a picture so we could get a picture.
So then I guess I have the next one as well, and that is for my namesake, Vincent Tena Hedo. So Vincent, come on up here. Why don't, why doesn't Sal Jr. and Grace and Jen, do you want to come up and join me, please? All of you, the whole team, and where's our councilman? So I think he's doling himself up back there, kinda, you know, just straightening up the tie and buttoning up his jacket and getting himself ready, but we'll, by the time we're done, he'll be out here with us for the photo. So it's my honor tonight to have with me my commissioner, my youth commissioner, Sal Tena Hedo Jr., Grace Tena Hedo, but this is a guy we're recognizing tonight, Vincent Tena Hedo, who's a rising star. And I have the honor and have had the privilege of knowing the entire Tena Hedo family since I've been on the city council, and so I've seen them grow up. They're a great family, a great group of kids, but, you know, you know, Sal Jr. is a debate student, he's a scholar at Fullerton High, you know, just doing great things on the commission as well with me, and he's doing such good things that he's my commissioner on that, on that youth commission. But I, you know, tonight is Vincent's night because it's very, very special, the accomplishments that he's made, and we've been witnesses to that, so my colleagues and I, and I'm the guy that knows least about baseball, but I'm gonna talk about it as if I do know a lot about it, because my sports are basketball and football, but because of his amazing work, I'm turning into a baseball fan. So, you know, but I want you to know that I have a, you know, a 13-year-old son as well, but the type of accomplishments that Vincent's done in his life already, in his very short life in sports, is just incredible, and for it to, for it to happen here in Santa Ana, he really is an asset to our community, he really is an example to other young kids to do what he's done, and I think it's a testament, more than anything, to his family. This is a beautiful family, and I know the accomplishments, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recite to you in a little bit, of what Vincent's achieved is really, again, a testament to the hard work that Sal and Jennifer have invested in him. And, you know, sometimes being a great athlete, it's physical ability, but it's also being an emotionally and a, you know, an emotionally and psychologically well person, and I think that that goes a lot and is based upon a really strong family. So Sal and Jennifer, you guys really are the reasons why, and, you know, with brother and sister like, you know, Sal Jr. and Grace, you guys have been that support system for Vincent to do all these great things. You guys are gonna get to witness it on video, and I hope the video works, but let me just say a couple of things about what Vince, what I'm talking about, so you know why we're, you know, why we're talking so much about Vincent and his accomplishments. He began playing baseball when he was just three years old. He played Little League until the age of eight and started playing travel ball and pony ball thereafter. His focus has been on travel ball lately, and he's been on the All-American team since the age of 11, and at age 12, last year, was on the baseball youth All-Star team for Little League. Last week, and that's a big, big deal, so when you guys see like the Little League teams on ESPN and you see them play one another and how they go not only regional, and then they go to the state, then they go national, and then they start doing international play, Vincent's been playing on that. Last week, he received an invitation to play in Cuba, and he's gonna be playing against teams from Venezuela, Mexico, Canada, and Cuba. That's like, those are the elite countries that send the best players, not just nationally but internationally. He, the Santa Unified School District recently honored Vincent as being selected as the USSA All-American. Board member John Palacios explained, "It's a great honor to have one of our students chosen for such a high honor." So that's, you know, one of the most intelligent things I've heard John Palacio ever say, and one of the, one of the best things and most accurate things he's said, so kudos to John. Vincent Tena Hedo left for Orlando, Florida on July 30th and played for the 11-U Far West team at the beginning of August. He currently plays on Team Phenomenon Elite, or Team Phenom Elite, and he leads his team with a, and this is where I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna speak really intelligently and give you some stats. He leads his team with a .453 batting average and a 1.98 ERA. So all you baseball guys know that those stats are huge, right? So, and he also leads his team in runs scored, RBIs, and wins. He credits, right on cue, like, that deserves some applause. He credits his team to Chad Baum, who's the assistant coach at Cal State Fullerton, and pitching coach, Arasmo Ramírez, who was our grand marshal at this year's Fiesta de Patias Parade. You know, I could go on and on, but I'm just amazed because when Sal and I have, council member Tena Hedo and I, you know, have conversations about our kids, I think, "Man, your kid's on Channel 2, he's on ESPN, he's on this team and that team." I said, "You know, my kid gotta be in math." So, you know, I just think, I'm happy for that. I think he's, you know, making it to school every day and having fun, but it's, it's a joy, Sal and Jennifer, that we take in seeing Vincent and all your kids do well, but just to see him, and he looks like a rock star already, right? So he's, the only thing I told Sal is when he gets those big contracts, remember that I'm an attorney, and I do, I can do some agent law, you know, so make sure to look me up. Let's, let's see the video, because this will show you many of the things that I'm talking about, and it kinda will, will show you and see what we're all witnessing here.
Right there at second base, and you're gonna have to give your catcher a little bit better time. Tena Hedo gets onto this one, it hits to the wrong way, the straightaway hitter. Two-run homer! And the West jumps back in front by a run.
Well, the wind's blowing out, the park's not, you know, it's a great park, the, probably, what, 225, 230, you get anything up in the air, and that was a ball up in the zone. Tena Hedo just crushed it, and he knew it as well. Didn't do the bat flip that Ron did, but, you know, he kinda knew that it was gone and trotted around, and he was able to high-five Catalina, watch this swing. Fastball up in the zone, got under it. Well, he did do the bat flip.
A little something there. Put a little something on it.
He did that cute, cool as a cucumber. I mean, he just swung that, hit that, and just walked, walked off that homerun. So, look, I just, again, because he's somebody that we've seen grow up, he's almost like one of our kids, we're kind of an extended family here. We've seen, you know, these three grow up, they've seen my three grow up, we've seen, you know, the mayor's kids grow up, and, you know, and all of ours, David's, and it's just been such a pleasure, and Angie's, and so we're all a big family, we all root for one another. When we see one of our kids do well, we all take pleasure in it. So I want to give this recognition, and Sal, come and join me up here, because, look, you and Jennifer, you know, are just amazing parents, and you teach them how to be good kids, you know, they're academically strong, but they're, you know, they're just good, well-rounded, nice kids, and I think that that's something that... And I think that that's something that speaks well of our community because these are examples that we try to give to everybody in the community. So Vincent, let me give this to you on behalf of all of us here on the city council and a city that loves you and a city that's seen you grow up and a city that wants to see you aspire to great things. And we know you will. We know you will. Just remember that Santa Ana is your town, it's your hometown, it's where you were raised, and all the folks are going to be behind you. And when you're on TV, when you're on ESPN and CBS, just remember, you got all 350,000 of us with you. And so Vincent, in recognition of being selected to represent the Far West team as the United States Specialty Sports Association All-American, congratulations, son. Well done.
Well, I just want to get one thing straight. I usually do not bat flip like that or do the little dance at home play. The clip before that, a kid hit a homerun, showed up my pitcher, and I kind of called it in the dugout. I said, "If I hit one out, I'm going to do everything that I said on that video." And, but, I mean, I was surrounded by great athletes, great players out there. I got to thank my family, my dad, my mom, my brother, and my sister because they've been behind me since day one. They've always supported me, and they're a very loving family. They've, they're the reason who I am today, and they've taught me great things in life and in sports. And I just got to thank them for everything that they've done. I also have a few gifts for the members. I have three signed baseballs for Mr. Cavassos, Ms. Martinez, and Mr. Sarmiento. There are my homerun baseballs from Cooperstown that I played in this last late August. And we came in third place over there. Great teams out there as well. And a lot of great competition nowadays, so I'm very happy to be with who I am today.
These are going to be worth a lot one day. So this is going on my mantle in a case. So remember when, you guys were witnesses, we just saw a star being born. You notice all my kids are taller than me, including my daughter is probably my size now. They get their height from my wife, not from me.
Now, if it's appropriate, I believe Councilmember Roman Reyna is going to have our next presentation. And that'll be made to Santa Ana students. Please go ahead.
Great. As we start to prepare, we're going to recognize the Assistance League of Santa Ana. We're going to ask them to come on up. I see a few in the audience here. Lisa Solomon, Kay Houseley, and Carol Williams, please step on up. And as they're making their way, I think Lisa's going the wrong direction. Come on, come on, all the way. Oh, that's what she's doing. You know, as, as we all know, the school year's just got started, and we have a whole bunch of students that are attending. And a lot of the students go without some of the support that they need. And great organizations and great individuals like the ones you see behind me really step up to assist and to help out. And the way they assist is through Operation School Bell. And they provide our students from kindergarten to eighth grade with the uniform, actually two uniforms, two complete uniforms, a sweater, some underwear, some socks, definitely important, some socks, some shoes, a book, a bookbag, supplies, and a grooming kit for over 2,000 of our students. Every elementary school has about 40 students that participate in this program annually. This program is absolutely phenomenal. It started out in LA in 1994. A teacher had asked the students if they had extra school supplies or uniforms that they could share with their classmates, and it snowballed into this national movement. And City of Santa Ana Assistance League tends to lead Orange County with all the support that they, they provide. At this point, I'm going to pass it on over to my colleague who happens to be a school teacher as well.
Good evening. Roman asked me to come up and present this recognition tonight because I'm, I am a school teacher in Santa Ana. And I just want to reiterate how important it is for the organizations like these to come out and support our kids with uniforms. Oftentimes, parents aren't able to provide enough uniforms for them to wear to school every day. So I just want to show, tell you how grateful we are to have you do that for us. Thank you.
And let's hear from some of the good work that our volunteers are doing. And it looks like we're going to bring up Lisa Solomon.
I'm Lisa Solomon, and I'm a principal also, but I'm also a member of the Assistance League of Santa Ana. And the reason that I joined the group is just because of the amazing work that they do. Our Assistance League in Santa Ana clothes more kids than any other Assistance League in Orange County. Other cities will do 300 or 400 kids, but here we're able to clothe 2,000 children every year. And we have to thank everyone who does take part in it because it's all of our members who, we get our money for the uniforms from our thrift store that we have, which is on First Street. If you want to go visit, it's 1031 West First Street. And we, that's how we make the money that we use for our programs for our students. And we're able to provide, like Roman said, uniforms. But more than anything, it helps our students because when they start school, they have a sense of pride. To get to school with a brand-new uniform, feeling scholarly and feeling good about yourself, honestly, that's why we do it. We do it to make a difference. And when you see the kids leave with their smiling faces, you really can't beat that feeling. We have volunteers, not just our members, but then we also have people from the community, high school students who come back, who they received uniforms when they were little and now they're giving back. And then each of the schools has employees who give of their time, not only volunteering, but who are able to gather the information from the families and then let us know which families are most in need so we can truly help them out. So we'd like to thank you for recognizing us as the Assistance League of Santa Ana, and thank you for recognizing the hard work of all of the members. Thank you very much.
You know, I'm a firm believer that it takes a community to raise a family. And you can see behind me some great work that they do in assisting our families in our community. And a real quick plug, part of their, all these activities end up eventually costing dollars. And their annual event is called the Best Taste of Santa Ana. Next one will be, the next year's will be taking place Saturday, May 21st, 2016. And if you're able to support that, it would be fantastic to get on out there. I do want to leave you with this, that there's no greater impact in your life than another caring human being. It's not money, it's not a program, it's not a facility, those things assist and help out, but it truly is a caring human being. And the Assistance League of Santa Ana is a forefront leader in doing so, and you can see that the impact that they have on an annual basis. It is my privilege and privilege to recognize them and to honor this certificate of recognition for your generous contributions to City Santa Ana students throughout Operation School Bell. Thank you so very much. All right, well, I'm up here. Let's finish the next one. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask all the volunteers that had participated in coaching rookie ball, if they can please step on up and join me. Don't be shy. I know there's a few of out here. Don't be shy, come on up. Born and raised here in the city of Santa Ana, during the 80s, there was a lot of challenges, there was a lot of violence, and I was really lucky to participate in these type of recreational programs. My brother, who's only four years older than I was, unfortunately, made bad choices and made bad decisions that led him into a path of jail and incarceration. Myself, I was able to move in a direction of sports that really challenged me and taught me discipline and moved me in a positive direction. And I know if it wasn't for the caring adults that were volunteering their time to have an impact on a child that they never met, that they didn't know, really had a sustained change in myself. And these are the exact same role models that you see behind us. At this point, I want to just give you guys a real quick round of applause for all the things that you do in our community, the impact that you have in our kids. It truly is a sustained change. I am one of the beneficiaries of volunteers like you, and I want to give you guys a round of applause. So today, what are we recognizing them for? We're recognizing for their time and energy in affecting kids' lives specifically through the city's Rookie Ball League that had been absent for about six years. This year, we're able to serve over 110 students, male and female, again, through the dedication of the time, through the individuals that we have behind us. The groups have broken up into three segments. Pre-K to second grade was one group, third and fourth grade was pitch coach, the third one was, I'm sorry, was fifth through eighth grade. And so these are the different age groups that we are starting to develop with our Rookie League Ball, and we are continuing to doing so. Our fees are really, really affordable. I want to say it's less than $35 for our programs. So please get the students involved. It's an opportunity to build some camaraderie with their neighbors, to be physically fit, to learn some discipline, and help shape their future as they move forward. At this point, I'm going to ask Saul to come on up and speak. Samuel, I apologize, Samuel. Will they come on, Brenda? Don't be shy.
First off, I would like to start off by saying that I love my community. I love to give back any way possible. But I give back many reasons, and the major reason, I would say, to watching the kids smiling and playing, seeing them get along with one another, knowing that I am today, knowing that what I'm doing today could make a major impact on their lives in the future.
And again, the impact that you have, it truly does. To me, the most valuable thing that we possess is our time. Because once we use it, we don't get it back, no matter what. So where we spend our time is huge about our character and what's important to us. And the fact that you intentionally take time out of your day to work with complete strangers to help guide them in a positive direction is absolutely huge about the character that you guys have. The foundation of our community is strong with you guys, and I'm pleased to be able to recognize you guys here today. So join me again in a round of applause. Real quick, and hopefully I don't miss anybody here, but Brian Espinosa, Victor Espinosa, José Margot, Jaclyn Martinez, Samuel Martinez, Jimmy Pantone, Maricio Reyes, Carolyn Rodriguez, Gato Rojas, and Veronica Rojas. Again, and Samuel Martinez. Again, thank you so very much. Did I miss, Greeny Garcia? Appreciate it. Thank you.
With that, Madam Clerk, I think we're on to our consent counter. Is that correct? Okay. Madam City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session, please?
Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public, we had numerous closed session items, but we have no reportable action tonight.
Okay, so with that, let me go, have a couple folks want to speak, I believe, on consent counter items. But let's go ahead and see if councilmembers first have any items that they wish to pull. Councilwoman Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have three items I'd like to pull, 25B, 31A, and 31B.
Did you get those, Madam Clerk? Anybody else on the council? With that, I would entertain a motion on moving the balance of the council. We have motion? Do you have another item? We'll take it in a moment. I've got some folks right here. We'll take it very quickly. So we have a motion in a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes unanimously with a four present. So with that, I have a few people that want to make general comments. Let me take those general comments. Thelma Villanueva, can you please step forward at this time? Followed by Steve Rocco. And Steve, why don't you come on down? That way you'll be closer to the mic. Followed by Doria Ramos. Followed by Brenda Velasco and Dylan Thompson. So if everybody I called, just come towards the front. Please, go ahead, Thelma. Just take that other microphone there. And Madam Clerk, can you help her out? Or maybe she's got it. Go ahead, Thelma. If we can start the clock, you have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Thelma Villanueva. I am a pathologist with specialty in DNA analysis and private autopsy. My job is to find out how and why people die. I have worked for the military, the government privately, and I have taught in various academic institutions.
Come close to the mic, please.
I have known Mr. Rocco for 10 years. Together, we have poured over death certificates, medical charts, and made firsthand observations. I have been to Orange County five times in behalf of Mr. Rocco. I have never had been allowed to testify. I have provided four notarized declarations. I have never asked for or been paid for these services. I never expect to or want to be paid. Political and medical murder is a fact in Orange County. Innocence is not to be seen. Institutionalized systematic murder is the norm. Although I asked, I have not been allowed to be in attendance in any of these most important murders of Orange County. Death certificates, medical charts are incompetent and inadequate. Unfortunately, you are the guilty party. I, we want nothing from you. Conflict of interest is your guilt.
Thelma, if you could please conclude.
Every crime, every murder that has been committed is the result of your action and Too much corruption, too many murders, abuse of power. I am in agreement with the recall petitions that Mr. Rocco has initiated. I respectfully seek and recommend justice for the oppressed as soon as possible. Justice delayed is justice denied. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you. Steve Rocco, followed by Doria Ramos.
Two minutes, you're getting a little bit economical here with our time. But as we are starting the beginning of the Polito Ricacus recall, I think you probably should tell your officers that interfering with a recall is an illegal act. My street, which is the same street that the two twin Mexican girls were murdered at last Halloween, is the same place where we had saturation ticketing, including me, of course, within the first few days. On July the 24th, my house was up in flames, 50-foot-high. Strange that the fire department, which is across the street, wasn't there. So we had two fire departments from other parts of Santa Ana to take care of it. But let me tell you about something else. The first home invasion of my home was by an Orange City detective, and I didn't know that he was the next-door neighbor of Tony Ricacus, who we're also seeking a recall from. Didn't know that at the time. I gave you all books, so it's not in the book because I didn't know. But we sued, we won, and little did we know that there would be over a half a dozen more home invasions of my home by, if I forget any, excuse me, the Orange City Police Department, the Police Department of Santa Ana, the Public Guardian, the Public Administrator, the Mental Health Unit, the, I think I said Public Defenders, Public Guardian, Public Administrator. Guess who the Chief of Staff Guess who the Chief of Staff of the Public Administrator's office is? Why, it's Rocaques's wife. Isn't that something? And how about Todd Spitzer's neighbor? The ex-president, Kim Nichols, of the Orange Unified School District, who started a recall against me and failed? Well, and how about all the wonderful murders which we've had in Orange County and have been covered up? We have serial mass murder here by public administration, by the public administrator. And we were supposed to have an election, and the first time I got 40,000 votes, with a total of 158,000 votes in the entire Orange County. Guess what happened to the Public Administrator's office? Well, our Mr. Todd Spitzer, who claims he doesn't like Mr. Rocaques, had Rocaques appointed with a $40,000 raise. How do you like that? We kill people in Orange County, we take their money, we abuse them, as you did to my family, as you murdered my family and others, as a, as somebody who is as close to a coroner as you can get will testify to that. Ah, never been allowed to testify in Orange County, never been allowed. You are making money from this, Mr. Consultant. In Palm Springs, for the same crimes that you have committed, that mayor is already in jail. His house has already been raided. The city council chambers have already been raided. You're still here.
Doria Ramos, please.
So this is recall number two.
Doria Ramos, please.
Hello, my name is Doria Ramos, and I have lived in Santa Ana all of my life. I attended Rosita Elementary School, and one of my first memories of the Santa Ana library system is a field trip my third-grade class took to get our first, very first library cards. We walked to the New Hope Library during school hours and checked out our very first books there. Now I am a city employee working at the library. And the reason I mention all of this is because I'm here on behalf of the children we serve to present the council with some thank you cards that they have made in appreciation for the library being open on Sundays. Think, sorry, thanks to the funding provided by the city. So thank you to all of our council members for your continued support. These are the thank you cards.
Thank you. Just give them to the clerk. Thank you. Brenda, are you here? And then Dylan Thompson? Dylan, are you close to the front? Come on down, please. Go ahead, Brenda.
Hi, everyone, city council members. My name is Brenda Velasco, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Arid Garden Underground Aquifer Project, also known as AGWA. And we are trying to promote through the library, sorry. The library is Youth Civic Engagement Program. I want to take this time to thank you guys for supporting that program and for allowing me to speak here. I've lived in Santa Ana my entire life, and I've seen how important water conservation has been. This project is trying to promote many aspects. One aspect is an educational value. This project will be located on the east end of the library, which will allow people to get more information through the library, and it would be good for their personal resources. Another value for this is a functional value, and since we have grass there, it is very important to try to conserve as much water as possible. So by removing that grass and by putting more water-efficient plants, we could reduce that amount of water being used, so we could conserve more water. After the presentation that we had on August 7th for the AGWA project, we had a survey, and from that survey, 90% of the respondents viewed this project to be very important. This project will also be a return on investment, which will save water during the water crisis that we have now. I know that we have to reduce the water by 12%, so this project will help do so. What we're asking for this project is $100,000. And again, I just want to thank you for supporting the Youth Civic Engagement Program, and I hope you will consider the Water Conservation Initiative, or AGWA. Thank you.
Thank you. Dylan?
Good evening, council staff. Just here tonight to give an announcement. Connected Council is presenting "Santa Ana Community Policing for the 21st Century", a community policing forum. It's going to be held tomorrow night at 6:45 at the Immaculate Heart of Mary, and we're going to have our very own Chief Rojas as a panelist. Other panelists include, we have James R. Manderas from OC Human Relations. We also have Carol Saron, Professor of Criminology, Law, and Society from UCI. Gabby Hernandez, a member of Chicanos Unidos. Lee De Leon, a CEO of Templo Calvaro CDC, and also the pastor there at Templo Calvario. And finally, Brian Leal, who is on the Santa Ana Board of Parks and Recreation. So it should be a very interesting discussion. I'd really encourage the council to attend and participate, and that's all.
Thank you.
And I supply us for you. Give it to the clerk.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to direct our attention back to the business counter. Well, actually, on the, don't we have four items for you still on the? Let's go ahead. Let's do that, Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will be very quick. I have 25B, which is increased contingency for the LED streetlight improvement project. I just have a question for our Public Works Director, our city manager. This item was brought to us about three or four months ago, and possibly two months ago, and so I'm just wondering why we have an additional contingency from 30,000, which will increase to up to 50,000? So if I could please get some clarification, based on the RFCA, I'm still very confused on a lot of the RFCA's that our staff are presenting. They just really, to me, are not making sense, and I do my best to read as much as possible. I'm not sure. And so, Mr. Public Works Director, if you can just, you know, give us just some brief remarks as it pertains why we're moving forward with a higher contingency?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This particular project had 4% contingency originally. Usually for these type of projects, we allocate 10%, but the 4% was allocated because of lack of funding when original project came through. There was unforeseen condition. This is the LED conversion. It was a high voltage. There were different circuits that needed to be changed, and also there were thefts. Between the time they installed some of these copper wiring, and then later on it was theft, so it required additional 6%. So with adding this 6%, we're in basically normal type of contingency we allocate for this type of projects.
And thank you for that clarification. I understand typically it's 10%. Could I just ask, you know, specifically where these dollars are coming from? We went from four to six, and what pot of money is that directly coming out of?
It's coming from the streetlight maintenance budget.
So, and based on that, what would be the total cost that we'd be purchasing these LED streetlights? Can you give me that total?
The original contract amount was $498,000. That includes the 4%, and then we're adding 30,000 on top of that. So that would go up to 528.
After we transition from the LED lights, can you tell us what the savings will be for the city of Santa Ana over, say, a 10-year period or 20-year period?
Sure. Usually, the saving in energy costs would be somewhere around 60% with the new technology, and there's substantial saving in maintenance because the lighting would usually three to five years, regular HSB lighting, and these on 10 to 15 years in replacing them, so major maintenance cost.
And just my last question, just based on equity, wanting to make sure, can you tell us here, will these LED lightings be across city, or are they in a specific location?
These are for this specific location. We're moving forward with replacing the entire city. The reason we're not doing that because most of these lights are, right now, still owned by Edison, so we're going through the process of repurchasing the streetlights, and we have a plan to convert them.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I don't mean to give you a hard time, and I know when this was brought before, we were supposed to hire some kind of contractor, give us some kind of, you know, information as it pertains, how much would it cost, when will we be replacing all of these lights? And I talk about equity because it's important, and I know you guys picked a certain location, but, and I think we all understand the importance of lighting. We all understand that, you know, public safety has a role within law enforcement, but public safety also has a role with lighting, and the importance in areas where there may not be possible visible lighting, and sometimes you don't see lights in certain neighborhoods, and cause traffic accidents, robberies, etc. I could go on and on. We all understand the importance of what that means, and so I'm just wanting to make sure that as we move forward and we hire this person to give us this assessment, and that my colleagues understand that equity is important, that when we're going to be doing lighting, that it's across the board, and that this city council, that us as policymakers are making these decisions. And so I feel like as we make these changes and do these contingencies, is that, you know, we are kind of not looking at the big picture, and I understand that Edison owns a lot of the lighting, and I understand that the city council has told the city manager, you know, why we want to move in the direction of owning, but at the same time, just wanting to make sure that when we transition, that it is done in an equitable process. With that being said, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will go ahead and move the item because of the importance of it, but I'm just wanting to clarify, as we move forward and the directions that we take, that it is equitable across the city.
Mayor Protem, I think he wants to speak, but he's...
I just wanted a second, but my microphone, I think, was going a little wild, so I think the mayor sabotaged it last night, so I wouldn't be able to say anything, so.
There you go. I should. I did it a meeting too late. So with that, go ahead, Councilwoman Bustamante.
Benavides.
Benavides. You look like Bustamante.
I'll just move on to my comment.
There you go.
You're better looking. You're better looking. Feel good about it. Thank you. Thank you.
It's the beard.
Just to, just make comment on even some of Councilwoman Martinez's comments with regard to the lighting. Essentially, we're looking at LED, it's improved, it's more efficient, it's longer lasting. I just want to encourage staff to look at, when we're making these types of improvements, that we look at some of those areas and neighborhoods where there is greater need, whether it be for pedestrian safety, or also just matters of safety in general. Recently had a meeting with city manager and police chief over an incident that happened in the Townsend neighborhood, and I actually just walked by the neighborhood yesterday and walked by the street on Townsend, noticed a couple of lights out, and there are neighborhoods like that, pockets where there's a lot of density, unfortunately, gang activity, and whenever there is darkness, it makes it, breeds for, just for there to be more unsafe and illegal activity. So let's look at this, not only just as a matter of improving lighting in general in certain neighborhoods and certain parts of town, but if we're looking at being strategic and intentional, let's make sure that we look at those areas that need the lighting for the sake of safety of our communities and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benavides. Any additional thoughts? So we basically have a motion and a second, correct? Those in favor, please say aye. Aye those opposed. Motion carries. So with that, I think one more?
Yeah, Mayor, I have two more, and just very quickly. It's 31A and 31B. I will not be supportive of these items, and I just want to state for the record, as we deal with wireless facilities, and certainly understand the need for Sprint and Verizon and others, you know, again, the quality of life, and as we move forward with emergency preparedness, and I stated at the last time that my concerns that, you know, moving forward, for example, the city of Los Angeles and San Francisco, making sure that we're able to retrofit these facilities. Unfortunately, our staff and the city council decided not to be supportive. I wasn't here at that meeting, I was out of town, but you guys moved forward with the council's, with the staff's recommendation not to retrofit these facilities, and so with that being said, I have to vote no on allowing these wireless facilities. Thank you.
Does anybody want to hear from staff, or have any other Councilman Benavides?
Sure, I will, actually. On 31A, this is a 50-foot-high wireless facility, 2116 West Montevista Avenue, which is in Ward 4 and right down the street from my home, and I believe it's at, on the campus of Montevista Elementary School, if that's correct. Does anybody have? And I just want to confirm as to whether there's going to be any additional, there is a current cell site there. Will they be, again, it's a public facility, public space, although it's not city-owned, it's school-owned, from what I understand?
It's not city-owned, and it's a public facility.
Correct. Will they be adding an additional building for the equipment?
I think there will be a cell tower, yes.
Right. So my, for similar, and some of the, and some other positions, reasons, I'm going to be voting against this item. In general, when we have, and I've spoken about this issue before, when, a number of occasions, we have located cell sites, towers, and these monopines or different types of fake trees within parks, and it takes away from open space. I don't think it adds at all to the aesthetics. There is an attempt to try to camouflage them, but it really, it's an eyesore in reality. And this case, even though, again, it's not a, it's not a city land, it is land that is of the public, that is of the community, it's an elementary school, and I'm hopeful that there isn't much of the green space that our kids use that will be taken out to be able to accommodate a new equipment room. But it's, I think it's, there's no benefit, frankly, publicly, or minimal, I think. So for those reasons, I'm not going to be supporting this item.
Is that both A and B?
A, specifically, I'm talking about Montevista Elementary.
Yeah, question. Did we hear back from the district regarding this at all, or?
No.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. I've reviewed the staff report. It appears like it's a modification of the existing poll, and they're actually going to make it more conducive to something that looks better, but maybe what we can do, if you have questions, is continue it and answer those questions, Mayor, if you want, unless the council wants to make action today. But it looks like it's a retrofit of an existing poll.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor, is there is a motion on the floor?
There's currently no motion, just questions.
Why don't I move? Because it sounds like there are some questions that we may have to continue it to the next town.
All right. Do I have a second? Those in favor, please say aye. Aye those opposed. Motion carries. Is that true for 31A and B? Is that in your motion? All right, Madam Clerk, it was for both 31A and B. That motion was for both. So with that, let's go on to item, I think it is 50A. I would entertain a motion on 50A. So move.
Second?
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye those opposed. Motion carries. On item 50B, this is the 45-day moratorium on short-term residential rental use, and I have two speakers. So let me call up on the speakers Doug McLeith and Iris Ramirez. Douglas, are you here? Please come on down. And Iris, if you're here, please come on down. Oh, Iris, go ahead, Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Douglas McLeith, and I have been a resident of Santa Ana for a number of years. I moved here because I really like the city, and I love Santa Ana, and I plan on staying here the rest of my life. I think it's a great place to be. I'm a very blessed man. I'm married, I have a wonderful wife, two children, Hannah, 11, and Chloe, eight, and I own a home in Santa Ana. When I heard about this meeting, I read up on the events in Floral Park, and I can certainly sympathize with what went on with the neighbors' concerns over there. I don't know all the details, but I certainly wouldn't want a hotel on my street, or a party house, or Harley-Davidson clubhouse next to my house, or somebody with 427 cats or 40 fighting dogs. And something may need to be done, but on the other side of the coin, I am concerned that the city council might react and not consider the needs and the important benefits to short-term rentals and the concerns that I have for other neighbors. other neighbors. Um, I've had recent experience in short-term rentals over the past three years, and it's been a very happy and good experience. It hasn't been one little bit of inconvenience to my neighbors, and it's been a good thing in Santa Ana. Like everyone else, I've had troubles. And recently, um, my daughter was born with severe birth defects where I, she had to have multiple surgeries and lots of treatment. Also, when the recession hit, I got into, my, my income dropped considerably and I found myself in financial crisis. And what I did was I started renting out a small unit at the back of my house. And I used Airbnb for that. And I was very surprised and very delighted that it was a wonderful thing and it was a wonderful company. I've had dozens and dozens of people stay with me. And usually it's one person or two people. Usually it's only one car, no car. And even when people are staying with me, there's less cars at my house than that normal families down the street. And there hasn't been one single complaint from any of my neighbors and there really couldn't be. There hasn't been one loud noise. There hasn't been one problem at all. I've had people from Europe, from South America, from Asia, and they've all been delightful people. Dozens and dozens and dozens, and all of them have been delightful people. But the most important fact for me was that it saved me. It was a godsend. I thought it was providential that I was able to get a little extra income so I wouldn't lose my house, so that I would be able to take care of my children.
Douglas, if you could conclude, please. The light is red.
Yes. I would just, uh, hope that the council wouldn't overreact. I've brought copies of a San Jose ordinance that deals with this, that I think is a measured and wise response. I'd like to hand it out.
Please hand it out. And I want to call upon Mayor Protem. He has a comment.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. I appreciate them. Um, I was one of the, um, members of the council that spoke out in opposition and concern because of the comments that we received from both, um, you know, from all the neighbors that came and spoke in opposition and concern about that particular home. But my understanding, Mr. City Manager, is that, um, along with this 45-day moratorium, we're going to be provided with some options to consider, um, where in the city this may be possible, more of, um, a palette of, um, of alternatives that we can approach, not simply a moratorium, although that will be one of the options as well. And I think you're right. There are some cities that regulate this well. They're able to see what areas can, um, uh, you know, can, can accommodate th- this type of arrangement. We, I think, I think after looking at the issue more, there are balances that we can achieve. Um, certainly there are some areas that are more sensitive than others where they wouldn't work, but, um, I think a good, a good framework may be offered by staff will be helpful for us to reconsider. So I, I certainly now have a much more open mind after looking at Santa Monica's model as well and some other cities that have gone out and, and looked and seen where they could, um, just balance both interests.
There's a difference if somebody is there all the time where somebody is just leaving it and leaving it to other people and they're not monitoring what's going on. We don't want to...
This is public comment.
Understood. We receive your comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So, so with that, um, we have no more speakers. I would entertain a motion on I, on the item.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries, Councilor Mesquita?
Just a quick question. Now, with this moratorium, would that prevent the gentleman that just spoke from continuing to use his home if there have been no problems?
Under R, the R and B.
Uh, with the moratorium, at this point, this house will not be allowed to be using this for the 45 days.
I, I think, I want to do, I want to keep this in perspective. I want to know how many, how many, is it just been with that one problem of Floral Park, or have we had more, uh, issues throughout the city?
Thank you, Councilman. This is, uh, one of the things I emphasized before was, uh, there are a lot of people who really want to use this. And, uh, one of the issues that I dealt with in my former life was, people, uh, were having trouble making their payments and this was the only way they could save their house and the neighborhood actually supported. I think each case is different. Uh, so we cannot tell this person, um, any advice tonight, but I think the key that, uh, Mayor Protem announced, and I saw some heads shaking, we need this time to really take a look at it, present the options.
Okay.
Uh, but we're only enforcing it this time in one location.
Okay.
So with that, uh, I believe we have a unanimous vote.
Yes.
Okay, we have a unanimous vote. So let's go on to the next item, which would be, uh, 55A.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries. Now we go on to item 55B.
Mayor, move the item just with quick comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please go ahead and comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one. I'd just like to thank, um, our police chief and his staff and, um, you know, for the great work and, and of course, our lobbyists as, as we move forward. Um, you know, we were one of the, um, you know, cities, uh, that received most of the funding in the United States. And so, you know, we also want to thank, you know, Mayor Protem Sarmiento and Councilman Benavides, as they all, um, went off to Washington, DC, and of course, our city manager, uh, for, you know, the great work. And, and we both now sit on the legislative committee. Councilman Benavides has, uh, left, uh, but with that being said, he did participate in Washington, DC and, uh, bringing over $4.4 million back. Uh, and so just wanting to thank them for their efforts. And I move this item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there, we already, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I would now, uh, entertain a motion on 55C, which is accepting a donation.
I will be moving it with comment. I just do want to take the time to thank, uh, the Floral Park Neighborhood Association for their donation. Um, it's a $42,250 donation to, uh, keep these, uh, antique-style iron-cast, uh, light poles there in the neighborhood to make our neighborhoods more beautiful. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the comment. We have a motion of second. It's 10 antique-style street light poles from Floral Park Neighborhood Association that'll benefit the neighborhood. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Now 65A.
I'll move that with comment, Mr. Mayor. And I just have a...
Is there a second real quick?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. I, you know, and I was a no vote last year. And I understand, um, this time around regarding the council calendar, we actually are moving forward to council three meetings, January 5th, July 19th, and November 1st. And I think the July 19th is more because many of you, uh, go on vacation. I think last year it was in August. And so just wanting, I'm not sure who the clerk is speaking with. Has there been a survey in the rationale of why we're choosing July over August? And so if I could please get some clarification, how we came up with these dates, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mayor, um, in the past, they had requested a date in the summer. We had canceled August dates and July dates. And I think the preference that I saw from the majority was a July cancellation, but we can certainly cancel a, an August date if, if requested.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just to add to, uh, the city clerk, was that some of the individuals were involved in the school year, kids going to school in the second, uh, meeting in August, there's people going to college. So the theory was that if you did it in July, you wouldn't have that, uh, conflict. So this year, we actually did July, whereas the previous year, we did August, uh, based on that feedback.
So I'm just, I'm wanting to clarify, who made that determination? Did you, Mr. City Manager?
Based on council feedback. I think there was, uh, an email that was sent out.
I've never received...
It was council feedback that was...
I've never received an email. And so I would like to continue the item for two weeks. It would be greatly appreciated if you can continue it.
Let's entertain a motion for a continuance.
I'll second that.
Okay. Just real quick, show of hands. Who received an email here?
I don't remember if I received...
It wasn't an email. It was a conversation during the meeting.
All right. Cause I didn't receive anything.
Mayor, the, the conversation actually occurred here at the dais of when everybody was present, a year ago, when we made the decision just like this. But that, we can wait two weeks and do a survey, right?
All right. Let's do it. Thank you. So now let's go on. Madam Clerk, I think it'd be item 75A. Uh, this is time and place for a public hearing on item 75A. Uh, do we have any, uh, speakers wishing addresses on this item?
I have not received any cards.
You've not received any cards? Okay, I want to just, for the record, formally open up the public hearing. I, I have no cards, but does anybody want to speak on item 75A? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to council for questions or consideration.
I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries. Item 75B, this also is a public hearing to consider adopting consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. I have no request to speak, but I want to formally open up the public hearing. Does anybody wish to addresses on this matter? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for consideration. I would entertain a vote.
Move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item 75C, this is another public hearing, adopting a resolution authorizing negotiation for the sale of property owned at 1232 South Bristol. I have no cards, but I'm gonna now open up the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on item 75C? Seeing no one, I will close it and bring it to, uh, council for consideration. Do I have a motion? Don't everybody jump at once.
Move it.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries.
No.
One no. So you got the, that for the record, Madam Clerk? And then one, one, uh, absent vote.
I didn't hear that.
It wasn't loud enough? Well, she's still shy. So with that, um, uh, we're going to go to, um, item 85A, and I will call on Councilmember Sal Tina Hedo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, thank you very much for allowing me to place this on the agenda. We had talked about this a while ago, uh, and we had been talking about...
Excuse me, I have three speakers. I, do you want to go first? Do you want to...
No, let's leave...
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Sal. I should have, uh, noted it earlier. Uh, Dave Hoenn, followed by Darren Shippen, followed by Ian Van Kong, I believe it is. Dave, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the city council and staff. In 1970, my name's Dave Hoenn. I'm a longtime resident of Santa Ana. In 1978, an artist in San Francisco was challenged by city supervisor Harvey Milk to create a positive symbol to represent the LGBT community. Prior to that, the most recognizable symbol within the LGBT community was probably the pink triangle, which was used by Nazi Germany to identify and demonize homosexuals in German war camps. Harvey Milk, being Jewish, understood the significance of, significance of the pink, pink triangle, but wanted something more positive to represent us. And so he challenged the artist to come up with a symbol. The rainbow flag was first flown on June 25th of 1978. Almost by magic, it instantly became the symbol representing the LGBT community. Later that year, Harvey Milk, along with Mayor George Moscone, were assassinated. Today, except for the American flag, the rainbow flag might just be the most universally recognized symbol throughout the world. I don't believe there is any other symbol that is internationally recognized for its embodiment of love, acceptance, and equality of all persons, regardless of nationality, skin color, gender identity, language, belief system, or socio, socioeconomic status. Regardless of what our gender identity here tonight is, that is a philosophy we all should adopt. And I believe that is the message that Santa Ana wants. So I encourage you to consider raising the rainbow flag year-round. Now, I know that your dilemma might be that if you allow the rainbow flag, then other organizations will want their symbols raised also. And you know, there are a lot of special events that deserve recognition and would go against the spirit of the rainbow flag to not recognize all celebrations. We all do like a party. So perhaps a rainbow celebration flagpole could be erected, which is used to fly flags to recognize special events throughout the year. But when there isn't a special event, fly the rainbow flag to celebrate love, acceptance, and equality of all persons. The pole would never be empty. It will, it will either be flying a special event flag or the rainbow flag. For instance, wouldn't it be great if this week we were flying the flag of Santa Ana College? You have all, you have all have traveled to cities throughout the US or the world. Doesn't it warm your heart and lift your spirit when you see a rainbow flag? Or perhaps even a rainbow painted crosswalk? Doesn't it impact, doesn't it impart a positive message about mankind? And isn't that the positive message that we want for residents and visitors of Santa Ana? I commend all of you for your past support of Harvey Milk Day and Pride and other events. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Darrell, Darren, excuse me, followed by Ian Van Gong. And Ian, if you can come on down, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak about 85A and the rainbow flag and options. And thank you, Sal, for putting it forward. Um, what a wonderful thing to see that rainbow flag flying over when the Supreme Court decided that we were equal and we could get married. I am married to Dave. I've lived here since 1996 when I was his roommate, because the law didn't allow us to be anything but roommates. And then it allowed us to be domestic partners, and then we finally could be spouses. So it, it was wonderful to see. But as an option for, uh, flying the rainbow flag, I think you should consider flying it under the city flag, because the city rep, represents all of us and under the flag, you represent all people. I think it'd be great to have maybe, uh, the Mexican flag for Patres, Fiesta de Patres, um, for Black History Month. Perhaps we could fly that flag. We could fly, uh, a flag for Tet, but not just, not special rights, just equal rights. So maybe we could fly that during Harvey Milk Day and maybe, uh, Pride Month. So maybe a, a, a place for special, special flags for special recognition under the city flag. Thanks.
Thank you. Ian, please.
Good evening, Mayor Polito, Mayor Protem, Sarmiento, and all members of the city council. My name is Ian Van Kong. I'm here on the behalf of the Rainbow of Orange County, uh, nonprofit organization that, um, with a mission and a vision to create a unified, safe, and equitable community that empowers our individuals and their families to reach their full potentials. With that being said, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for recognizing, um, Harvey Milk Day in 2010. And, uh, back to the issue on the, on our agenda today. My partner and I are residents of the city of Santa Ana. The issue that we discussed today is close to home to us, literally and figuratively. As you all know, Santa Ana is a very large city with a very diverse population economically, socially, and culturally. The decision to fly the rainbow flag, which is a symbol of inclusion, along with the California flag and the American flag over our city hall, will demonstrate that our city embraces its diversity and send a welcoming message to individuals, families, and businesses that might consider visiting or making Santa Ana their home, which in turn will benefit our city tremendously. I strongly urge you to consider sending that message of embracing diversity, inclusivity, and safety to all of our residents and prospective visitors and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, uh, let me go back to Councilor Tina Hedo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the speakers who came up and spoke eloquently about this issue. First and foremost, the flag, the rainbow flag represents equality, which is an accepted value in our country and in other industrialized countries around the world. I think we can all agree that equality is a, uh, a monumental value to have. This flag is not just about marriage. The flag is about liberty and equal rights of our LGBT community under the law. More importantly, it represents liberty and equal rights of Santa Ana residents who are LGBT. Flying this flag also welcomes LGBT visitors, as one speaker spoke. After many years, LGBT now has the rights under the Equal Protection Clause in the United States. Think about that. The Equal Protection Clause now applies to the LGBT community. The flag, flying the flag is an affirmation of this now established constitutional right. There have been people who have said, well, where, where do we draw the line? Where do we draw the line? What if another group wants to put up their flag? And I say, the line could be drawn when other groups that don't have this protection, this protected constitutional right, overcome those challenges and finally... protected constitutional right, overcome those challenges and finally get that victory of equality through our Supreme Court process. We have many court cases throughout the years that have dealt with equal rights. I think of the Loving case in nineteen sixty-seven. Had it not been for individuals who stood up and took the wrath of others, but stayed true to what their belief was, I wouldn't be allowed to marry my wife today, being an interracial couple. Racism still exists in our country, as we've seen it. So we do things in our educational system, in parades, functions. We commemorate people who stood up for civil rights, and we do those to educate the next generation, to remind them of the difficulty that it was to earn those rights, to have people accept those rights. This flag is a welcoming symbol. The flag going up at City Hall is a vote of confidence for Santa Ana's future. It's an opportunity to say, "Look where we've come. The Supreme Court has spoken. Let's remember those who have died asking for this right. Let's not forget that one of the highest groups that commit suicide in the United States are our LGBT teenagers. Let's give them a symbol that says, 'Hey, this is Santa Ana, the center of Orange County, and we welcome you, and we appreciate you, and we love you.'" How do you vote against that? And so this is something that, I've never been nervous to speak, but I'm actually shaking because I know it's controversial. But we're standing up for love, we're standing up for equality, and we're celebrating that. And that's why I wanted to bring this forward. So I'm hoping that my colleagues would be willing to take a look at this and fly the flag. I'd like to hear what they have to say, and then we can continue to discuss it.
Thank you. Is there any other comment or thought on this?
I have-
Councilor Armazca, please.
Yes, I think the city of Santa Ana would be sending a strong message of that we embrace diversity and just we're a city that embraces inclusion and acceptance. And I'm very thankful that Councilmember Salteena Hedo brought this forward. I think, like he said, there are many teenagers that struggle with this, and I am fully supportive of bringing this, of you bringing this item forward. So thank you.
Is there any other comment on this matter?
I think there's probably a little bit of a pause from a few of us on the council. It's a difficult topic to discuss, because I think it's, we're sending, it would be potentially sending a strong message one way or the other. If you, if we decide to support the item of flying the rainbow flag, I think it would mean a lot to one segment of our community. And just from the feedback, frankly, that we received from quite a few people in our community after the Orange County Register ran an article, we had quite a few phone calls, emails, folks who, some that were very negative and insensitive, but others that were people that genuinely said, "You know, we respect the LGBT community, but we think that it would be just being too partial to one segment of the community." And so as an elected and representative of the city as a whole, it just, it's a difficult kind of position to be in. And I think personally and as a city, as a council, we have stood numerous times very proudly by different groups that have faced challenges, and the LGBT community being one of those. I'm still very proud of the position that we all took unanimously when we stood by different representatives of the LGBT community on the very historic landmark decision that the Supreme Court made toward marriage equality. And I think for something as monumental as that, to stand in one accord, to, with the representatives of the LGBT community leaders and to fly the flag, I think that was something that was significant. It is, it is something that is, I think, that the question, it can be seen as a very simple question, whether you draw the line, and we can try to figure out and decide, you know, certain specifications or, but I think it would be, my concern is that if we took a position to fly the flag that represents one group in our community, that either we would alienate or more, even frankly, more of my concern is that then it would become reason for there to be just an adverse, a negative reaction towards, towards that group, towards the LGBT community. And I think frankly, what we're trying to do is to be bridge builders and bring folks together. We celebrate Pride, we celebrate Harvey Milk, and I think our position is that we will continue to do so. So I respect Councilman Salteena Hedo's position and courage really in bringing this forth, but I'll be very honest, I'm having a difficult time with this, with the recommendation.
I think it's an opportunity for the city of Santa Ana to come out as the leaders in doing this, you know, and that's why I think I appreciate that you brought it forward, Sal, because I don't think any other city has ever even contemplated doing this. So, you know, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Now, let me go to the right, Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Councilwoman Salteena Hedo for also bringing this issue up. And certainly, you know, I know when controversial issues come up, the mayor always looks my way, because I'm always the first to speak up.
No, no, they spoke on the left.
Yeah, I know, because I looked directly towards the audience, and I wouldn't look towards you, Mr. Mayor.
There you go.
I know better, right? But anyhow, you know, look, certainly there is reluctance, and, you know, off the bat, just from what was being proposed, I was a no vote, not because I'm against equality, not because I'm against the rainbow flag. It's the mere fact is that it opens up a Pandora's Box. And I just want to take this council back, whether there was a case that moved forward or not, we recognized that effort and brought that forward. I was the one that asked for us to post the rainbow flag. And so there is no dispute of where I stand, and no one from the outside asked for the council to raise that flag. It was Michelle Martinez that asked the city council and the city manager and my colleagues to do that initially. So we were leaders, but we also need to recognize the diversity of this community, and certainly I want to bring the council back. And even though, look, we recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, the majority of this community is of Latino descent. And not too far or long ago, we had a discussion about, you know, changing the name from Fourth Street to Cayo Guato and doing just something just, you know, very basic. And there was a lot of reluctance from this council. And I guess, you know, it's very disappointing that we are willing to stand behind, and most certainly I understand why and the importance, but let's make sure that when we decide to have equality, that we do it across the board, that there's equity, that we just don't downplay the contributions of everyone in this community, because everyone has played a role. And so, you know, as we move forward, and I'll tell you what I can be supportive of, certainly, you know, we have supported Harvey Milk Day, we supported Pride, and I'm willing to raise the flag during those times. But I want us to as well understand that there's diversity. So when the Vietnamese community comes and they want us to raise their flag, or Cesar Chavez Day, and God knows what else is going to come before us, just understand that this is going to open those doors, and we just can't say no. So we gotta have a true policy that is going to really stand out when it comes to equity. And so I just want to make that very clear. And so if, hopefully, the maker of the motion who brought this up is willing to consider us doing it during the month of Pride Month or during Harvey Milk, I'm willing to support it, and I have always been supportive, and I'm willing to do something like that and give my support in that respect. But I'm just wanting to make sure that this council understands that equity is very important as we are policymakers. We can't pick and choose what we want, because we can't put our personal beliefs up here. We have to put Santa Ana first. And so I just want to make sure that we all understand that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Samiento, and then I'll go to the maker of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if a council member made a motion, but I'd like to defer to him so he can make the motion. But what I did want to say, just very briefly, is I want to thank him for bringing this issue forward, because it is a very sensitive issue. I think it's something that makes us reflect, what is our responsibility? Is this an issue that's important enough for us to address? I do recall a lot of the emails when the article on the Register ran, I received some very, very hostile, ugly emails. There were, there was language included in some of those emails I couldn't repeat, but they were very, unfortunately, they were very opposed and adverse to what we're looking for today. And I think the reason why the council member and all of us are supportive, I think, of the issue in principle is that we want to make sure that all communities are represented well, and we want to make sure that those interests are protected. They're legally protected now. And I remember those of us who stood before everybody and talked about recognizing Harvey Milk, I think it was one of the first cities in the county to do it. And I remember people said, "Why do you want to recognize Harvey Milk Day? What has it got to do with anything that you're doing as a council?" Well, it's important, because we do represent a very diverse community, and when we have issues like that, it's important to be on the front end. So for us to be even talking about a flag and having it fly, you know, in front of our City Hall, it's symbolic and it is groundbreaking, and it is something that's novel, and it's not something that happens, especially in Orange County. Remember, people, this is a very, this is probably one of the most conservative counties in the country. So for us to do this here does send a strong message, and I think, you know, we all understand that. So again, we embrace that diversity. It's not like other cities, unfortunately, who run from them. So I would be very supportive of what I heard one of the speakers say, which is to recognize and fly that flag with dignity and with honor on those days that I think are important, like Harvey Milk, like Gay Pride, like other days that symbolize that struggle that we now know has been codified in law. So I'm supportive of that direction, because we do have other communities that are very meritorious of their flags as well. Cesar Chavez Day is something that, you know, the UFW flag, I think, is also very worthy, because farm workers, undocumented folks who struggled for our community as well have a right to have their flag flown, you know, on our flagpole, and for us to honor those struggles on those days that are appropriate. So I think what this does, it invites communities that have different struggles to come before us, and as a city, we can support those and recognize those on those appropriate days. But I do, I don't want to make that as a motion. I'd like to defer that to the council member, because I think this is his valiant step to put this before us, and he could have shied away from it. He could have said, "It's too sensitive, I don't want to deal with it." But he's at least putting it before us for us to deliberate, and for that, I want to thank him, and I want to thank him for his courage.
Thank you. And before I go back to Councilor Salteena Hedo for a moment, let me just ask, if anybody hasn't spoken, let's, in the sense of equality and fairness, Roman, you've not spoken, and I think I've not spoken, please go ahead.
Well, thank you so very much. Appreciate it. I echo a lot of the same comments that my colleagues have made, and I think that all the challenges that are facing our community that are overcome historically should be recognized at every level, because it makes our community stronger, absolutely. And it's difficult to say that one plight is more challenging than another, or their hardships are more so than another, and it becomes splitting hairs, and it really is challenging. I would be more supportive of being able to come up with a process to be able to fly a flag that we're recognizing or honoring that day or that week, because there are a lot of challenges out there. There are a lot of issues that have overcome obstacles. And if we look at this country itself, you know, it was an experiment then, and it was challenging. And we heard some of the comments today, we talked about equality and liberty and equal rights. And to me, that's the symbol of the United States' flag. Worldwide, it shares those values. It says that these are people that come together as a diverse group from mixed challenges, from mixed backgrounds, coming together for one country itself. And I think that those are the flags that surely should be flying, the city, the state, and the country, and of course, the POW who allow us the freedoms that we have. I would be more supportive of creating a process so that we could address these on an individual basis or weekly basis of who we may be honoring that particular situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me put my two cents worth, and then I want to go back to Councilor Salteena Hedo. I believe Darren Shippen said it very well when he walked up, and he said, "We've made a lot of progress." He also said, you know, "Let's allow others as well." And I believe that if we were to have a poll only, you know, for one cause, let's call it for a moment, because I think it's a cause, it's a lifelong struggle, it in and of itself would be, you know, potentially divisive and be an inequality to others. And so I am in favor of figuring out something where on Harvey Milk Day or Gay Pride Day, we allow the flag to be flown as a celebration, as a recognition. But I like Councilor Moreno's concept of maybe a little bit of more thought to say, you know, "Are we going to have Cesar Chavez' flag?" I mean, personally, I believe we should, and try to come up with some type of policy so we know what we're getting into, and that at the end of the day, we have something that, you know, a majority of the council can vote. And I know we might not all agree at the end of the day, but I think if we can do it in such a fashion that it's not divisive, that there is no unintended consequences to when all of a sudden we're favoring one group versus another group, because we don't want to do that. What we want to do is make sure that nobody is put down, that nobody is suppressed, that we're not intolerant to any one group. I think we want to celebrate our diversity and freedom and equality towards all. And so we have to be careful not to, in our euphoria, to celebrate something that we end up inadvertently putting somebody else down. So, you know, for the record, I am not in favor of a poll that would only, you know, celebrate, let's say, one group, because I see this as a group of people. I'd be in favor of a policy that says, "We are going to allow the diversity of this beautiful city that we have, you know, to celebrate all people," and to give everybody their fifteen minutes, or in this case, maybe two or three days of, you know, a year of celebration. So with that, let me go back to Councilor Salteena Hedo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that one of the concepts here that we have to understand is that we're talking about equality. We're talking about equality. We're talking about a group of citizens, Americans, who for many, many years could not be who they were. You would get arrested if you were at a gay bar. You were discriminated against from holding certain positions. Just a few years ago, I was on the, at the Santa Ana, with the Board of Trustees at the Santa Ana Unified School District, and we were talking about comprehensive sex ed. And people were verbally or physically upset, and they would come out and they would talk, and they did so much gay bashing of our teachers that I was appalled. I went and apologized to those teachers afterwards, because they were saying things like, "We don't want our kids to be taught by gay teachers." What was interestingly enough was that the music, the choir teacher who had just brought in their kids, they applauded him, not knowing that he was gay, which I thought was one of the most ridiculous things. Ladies and gentlemen, this is about equality. This is about saying thank you to those who fought for many, many years so that the Equality Clause can be spread out to all Americans. Everyone does their part, and when you don't celebrate a struggle of that, of a group of people for that many years, I think it's, we're going back on- of people for that many years, I think it's, we're going back on our value of equality. I know that some people may be offended by the rainbow flag going up. That's something you're going to have to deal with because the reality is, gay people aren't going anywhere. The reality is, is that it's not a choice. My son did not choose to be gay. He did not choose to go through the stresses that he had. And this is, my son, being gay, is not the reason I'm putting this on. He knows that I have fought for gay rights for many, many years before I even knew he was gay. So this is not something new. I want to say this. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. It seems like our council, at this moment in history, is not ready to put it up permanently for a year, and that's fine. But I will make a motion that the rainbow flag go up here at City Hall on May 22nd, which is Harvey Milk Day, and it goes, it stays up until the end of June, which is the National Pride Month. And I believe that that is going to send a very strong message. For those of you out there tonight who are going to send us emails, you have every right to do that. You have the freedom of speech, but I just want to let you know. I look at comedians like Chris Rock, who's crazy sometimes, but he says some things that are true that make things funny. He said, "If you hate black people, one day, your daughter will marry a black man. If you hate gay people, one day, your grandchild will be gay." The reality is, 10% of the population is LGBT, and it's time that we treat them as equally as the heterosexual Americans here in our country. So I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion to second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, and hopefully, Councilmember Tina Hiddle will accept it. At the same time, I am supportive of that, but to also make sure that we create a process as it pertains to the other communities that we wish to also celebrate.
I will go ahead and support that amendment.
You accept that amendment? All right, let's have discussion on the amended motion. Is there any thought on that?
I'm supportive of it, on the amendment.
For the record, before we go, how many days are we talking about? Do we know?
May 22nd to the end of June.
Personally, I think that's not the intent that I would like to see. I'd like to see it not for five weeks. I'd like to see it for less, and I'd like to see that policy that would allow others before we vote. So for those reasons, I'll not be opposing, you know, supporting the motion.
So can we call for a motion?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Moreno.
You know, it doesn't seem like it's time-sensitive. We're looking at May 27th, so we have a little bit of time. It sounds like, in concept, we want to move in the same direction. I, too, am concerned about the timeframe because we're not creating a process. We're starting something. They're going to create a process after the fact. My preference would be to create that process beforehand. They could be the first ones on the list, but my preference is that we create a process prior to launching any program or activities.
Councilman Benavides?
I would echo that. I think we, overall, I don't think there's been any overall opposition or any antagonistic perspective or adverse perspective from anybody in the council with regard to recognizing and honoring the LGBT community, to even flying the flag. I think the question is, what's going to be the policy, the procedure, making sure that it is inclusive, going through and creating whatever policy or procedure first. I think it's most prudent that we don't put ourselves in a situation that, one of the council members mentioned a Pandora's Box, opening a Pandora's Box by taking an action. So I, the motion as it stands, I don't feel comfortable tonight supporting that. And in fact, I would make a motion, a substitute motion, unless the maker of the motion is interested in modifying their motion. But I do think that the motion tonight should be to set up the policy, procedure, to be able to, set up the guidelines to be able to fly the rainbow flag and have the overall discussion. And it may be that it is the same dates that were proposed tonight, but I think we'd be kind of putting the cart before the horse without knowing exactly what our policy is going to be. So that's my...
Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion?
No. I think that we accepted the friendly amendment from Councilwoman Michelle Martinez, which says, "Let's look at a process." This is, I think, a very reasonable, a very reasonable compromise to go forward. I think we're sending a horrible message to our gay and lesbian transgender community by saying that we're going to nitpick. See, in politics, there's moving targets, and people, they don't want to just come out and say, "I'm not going to support it." They create arguments that are moving, and let's delay. And, you know, the reality is, either you want to go forward or you don't. And so I would prefer just to go ahead. We've already put the friendly amendment that we're going to look at a process down the road, but I think that we have a very vibrant gay, lesbian, transgender community here in the city of Santa Ana. They have been heard. They are business people. They are supporting this community, supporting the city. They're the first to volunteer whenever we need volunteers. I think we need to thank them for their work and for having to endure so much prejudice throughout their lives, and it's time that we give you a victory tonight, and I think that we need to go forward.
Thank you. So with that, Mayor Pro Tem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think that, I appreciate what I've heard from my colleagues to my left. I think it's, you know, it's very good to have a process, and I think we're all, we're always talking about good procedure, but I think we could do both. I think we could move forward tonight with the motion as amended, and we can continue on with the process as well. Many times, we've moved things without procedure, folks. We've done that ad nauseam. So if we want to start now to be procedurally correct on this fine point, then let's do it. Let's do it across the board, and let's never move on something without some sort of process or procedure. Let's call it what it is, so let's just be frank. We just, you know, we passed a moratorium tonight, a 45-day moratorium, without a process. And so we did, we've done things like this in the past. I think we need a process because I'd like to see the flag fly again, as was mentioned for Cesar Chavez Day. I'd like to see it flown on the Tet Festival, during the Tet festivities, a lot of different things that are worthy of our respect and support in recognizing different struggles, as was mentioned. But that doesn't mean that we should prevent us from moving forward tonight with the support of this flag. I mean, as it is, as it was mentioned, this was proposed to fly year-round. I think all of us realize, look, there's many different things, but we could do both. We can do things concurrently, so let's not hang our hat on a procedural obstacle so we can't move forward. So I would be, I would be supportive of the process, of having a process in place, but at the same time, moving forward with using those dates as was mentioned.
Councilor Martinez, and then Benavides.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to state, just for the record, as we set precedent here today, and I'm supportive of setting this precedent, but as I mentioned, for example, Cesar Chavez Day, if we move forward with a policy like this, we're going to have to be consistent. So when we have Cesar Chavez Day, we're going to post it up then, and today, we have the entire month, September 15th to October 15th, it's Hispanic Heritage Month, and so that flag will also be posted. We have Lunar Day, and we also have Tet Festival throughout the entire month. So I'm just wanting to make sure that my colleagues understand that you are setting a precedent. You are establishing a process. So we cannot just do it for one. We're going to do it for the others, and that's the policy we are setting here today. So I just want to make that clear, and I'm hopeful that you will be supportive when you cast your yea vote, and that will not change. Thank you.
Councilmember Moreno, you had something else?
You know, I'm not sure if some of the comments and what direction that they were intended to go into.
I'll give it to you, man.
Although on my end, I have family, friends, and friends that are from the LGBT community. I love them. I will continue to love them no matter what the situation is. So I want to move forward on this, but I want to make, I want to make sure that we move in a direction that makes sense. And if you ever attended one of our meetings, the one thing you walk away from is that some point, somebody's going to say, "We need to follow a process. We need a process. We need to make a process. We need to make sure that we stand true to that process." We're just doing what we want when we want to do it. And I think it behooves us really to take a stronger look at this as we move forward because we are setting a precedent. It's going to be five weeks. The next organization that's going to come up, they're going to want five weeks, and if we adjust it and change it, they're going to point to say, "Why are we treated differently?" I am more than happy to move forward. I do support this. I just think that we need to make sure that we are doing it, our due diligence in making sure we're taking everything into consideration before we move forward.
And, Mr. Mayor, I do...
Yes, go ahead.
I do understand that, and like Councilmember Martinez said, there are certain times, for example, you have Black Heritage Month, and there's no problem with putting something up that commemorates that. Harvey Milk Day was a significant day in the gay community. They lost a valuable leader, and the National Pride Month, the National Pride Month is the very next month, the month of June. So it's not like we're just using weeks and just pulling out them out of a hat and making those the weeks that we fly it. There's actual reason why we fly it on those weeks. So like I said, I think I've been more than reasonable in a compromise. I'd like to see if you'd call for the question.
Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to be making a substitute motion that we go through the process of setting up procedures first, then bring it back, and go ahead and hopefully have an opportunity for us all unanimously to support this, how we're going to go about recognizing the rainbow flag and others. What was, the comments were led with the idea of equality. One of the things that we have to recognize is that, at this point, we're saying five weeks for one specific flag. That's eliminating, that's over a month. That's then limiting, we're saying that there could be less than, you know, 11 potential other, if we're going to be talking equality, that would be efforts or causes or groups that would be able to be recognized. So I think, again, we're, there isn't equality, there isn't equity in the process. We're divided already as a council. I think it's just, it's bad precedent. It's just unfortunate that it's come down this way. But so my, again, substitute motion is that we go through the process.
Is there a timeline as to when you want it to come back to the council? And would there be a committee set up? What's the rest of it?
Yeah, so my recommendation is that an ad hoc would be put together, and if we're talking about May, it could be within 60 days or within 45 days.
Is that, well, we need to know what the motion is. Is there a second for the motion? So there's a motion to second. Any discussion on the substitute motion?
I think we should go with the original motion, so...
Well, but let's, we first have to now vote on the substitute motion, and then we go from there. Let me just say something on behalf of the substitute motion, if I may. I think if we bring it back soon, it's way before May of next year, and maybe it would be good to at least understand what we're doing in terms of days. I know we're saying it's about five weeks. I could be better know how many days. I think it also would be important to see what other causes council members have in mind. I know that some have mentioned, you know, different days and organizations. I, for example, think all the arguments that were made about oppression and non-recognition, you know, could be made, you know, for African-Americans. And I think it'd be very appropriate to speak about, you know, how we're going to deal with that. And I'd rather have the discussion ahead of time than to say, "Well, you already voted, and now you've got to, you know, work backwards." So I think it makes some sense to...
You know what's interesting, and I just thought about this. We can just put up a few more polls, and that way, if there's dates that coincide, we can just have multiple...
And maybe we go to the Plaza of the Flags. I think it's appropriate to give this all some thought. It's something that's permanent. So on the substitute motion, those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Oh, this is the first one or the...
No, this is the substitute one.
No.
Nay.
So that fails four to three. The original motion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No? So we have four in support and three opposed on the original motion. So with that, let's move on to our next item on the calendar. Madam Clerk, is that the study session? Okay, I have a few speakers on that. Ana Uriza, please come on down, and Adrian Muñoz, come on down, please.
So moving forward to the next item on the agenda, we understand you will be making recommendations tonight on the allocation of some surplus money in our city's budget. First of all, I want to recognize that as a good thing and as something to be celebrating about as well right now in Santana, also that it's a unique opportunity, and we hope to be able to spend that money in the way that will go the farthest. We have a list of recommendations tonight submitted in coalition among several of the community organizations, adults and youth residents and families that we represent under the Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities Initiative. And as you will see, these, we believe these are, because it's a unique opportunity, it's important that we take our dollars farthest, and we believe that by partnering, continuing to partner with community organizations that have been dedicated to this community now and moving forward, that we can make sure that this money is able to benefit families immediately and in the long term. These recommendations also go hand in hand with the city's strategic plan, which was a very inclusive process, also thanks to the work of some of our committed community organizations. So you will be hearing from several of us tonight about how these, how we can go further in our commitment to the strategic plan and in advancing some positive changes for healthier communities. I have a letter on behalf of several of our organizations and community residents, and you'll be hearing some more details about those recommendations. Thank you.
Adrian, please come forward, followed by Georgina Maldonado. Does anybody require a Spanish translation? Okay, please, we're ready. Adelante, estamos listos.
Pues buenas noches, gracias. Pues mi nombre es Adrian Muñoz, y soy residente de la comunidad de Santana, ya también por mucho tiempo, y también soy miembro de Sacred, y estamos aquí apoyando la, construyendo comunidades saludables y más organizaciones, y estamos aquí también para apoyar los, de que los fondos sean asignados a diversos programas que existen en nuestra comunidad y con gran necesidad. Sacred ha apoyado a la ciudad en el plan estratégico, y aún seguimos nosotros apoyando a nuestra comunidad, pero también seguimos abogando por nuestra, para que nuestra comunidad sea, sea escuchada. Por voluntad creemos de que ustedes como representantes de nuestra comunidad apoyen nuestras recomendaciones de donde colocar los fondos de este presupuesto. Eso es todo. Gracias. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Adrian Muñoz. I'm a resident of the community and member of Sacred, and we are here with Building Healthy Communities and other organizations, and we'd like to hear, here to support that the funds be assigned to several programs in our community that are in need. Sacred is helping the city in the strategic plan, and we're still supporting, and we are advocating for our community to be heard, and we'd like to, for you to support and the representatives of our community and to support our recommendations on where to place these funds in the budget.
Thank you. Georgina Maldonado, followed by Bateta Pon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Georgina Maldonado, Executive Director with the Community Health Initiative of Orange County. As a collaborative partner of Building Healthy Communities, an organization whose mission is to connect all children and families and adults to affordable, quality health care and social services, we support the recommendations provided by the Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities Initiative. Through this funding, CHIOC will be able to support and enroll a significant amount of Santa Ana residents who still remain uninsured. In the last five years, we have enrolled approximately 1,000 children and families who reside in Santa Ana. In 2014, 2015, different outreach and education events to promote access to health care programs have been provided in central Santa Ana. Yesterday, Cover California came to Santa Ana to launch outreach efforts in Orange County to prepare for open enrollment November 1st. They share the estimated number of potential enrollments subsidy-eligible, which is 40,000 in Orange County. Additionally, a significant number reside in the city of Santa Ana, specifically medical eligibles. As an expert in delivering local impact by coordinating enrollment and collaborating with other health and human service organizations and meeting... with other health and human service organizations and meeting the needs of the target population, it is imperative we continue to do this work in Santana. We at CHIOC recognize the need to respond to a changing healthcare landscape, and therefore, we urge you to support the recommendations of the Santana Building Healthy Communities Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Batana, followed by Jose Rhea.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Batana. I am an interim Executive Director of the Cambon Family Community Center, a thirty-five-year nonprofit in Santana. On behalf of the Cambon Family Community Center and the clients we serve, we would like to strongly support the Santana Building Healthy Community recommendation on the allocation of the surplus CD funds. The Cambon family is particularly urging you to allocate funding to the points on community spaces and the mental health and wellness services for one notable community, including youth wellness program. Ladies and gentlemen, City Councilmembers, I would like to bring your attention closely to why mental health and wellness services are being a gap in the city and also in the statewide. People with traumatic experiences related to genocide have unique mental health challenges that cannot be generalized by other category, and therefore should be separately evaluated by state, county, city department. The current practice where groups such as, but not limited to the Cambodians, are collapsed together in one broad category, for example, Asian Pacific Islander. In Orange County, Santana has the largest Cambodian populations, and many of which still suffer from the effect of the Cambodian genocide that killed almost three million people between 1975 and 1979. The unique mental health challenges of Santana Cambodian are multi-generational, expanding past the elder who will refugee to youth who are US-born citizens and reside in Santana. Unfortunately, smaller community and nonprofit organizations that service people with traumatic experience related to genocide are often unable to access funding because there is no direct program or grant set aside for this group's specific need. As a result, this community-based and nonprofit organization are left with less capacity and infrastructure to services those underserved communities who are in critical needs of health and mental health services, which are culturally and linguistically specific. Therefore, the budget allocation to this item is very critical for helping to address health and mental health disparity of communities with unique mental health challenges such as Cambodian. Once again, on behalf of the Cambon Family Community Center and the communal members of Santana who we serve, would like to strongly support Santana Building Healthy Community recommendation regarding how to allocate the surplus money from the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Rhea, followed by Rosalina Vargas.
So buenas noches a todos. So my name is Jose Rhea, and I'm here to support the recommendations on Santana Building Healthy Communities, also the Santana Healthy Neighborhood Alliance in Madison Park. And Madison Park Neighborhood Association has been, for the last fifteen years, working on improving the Pacific Electric Bike Trail. We had done annual cleanups, we had planted trees, we had put ivy on the walls, but the lighting, just to echo the recommendations of Councilwoman Martinez and Benavides, the lighting is a big issue because when you see that nice bike trail, it has come a long ways. It has a lot of use now. A lot of people use it, but only during the day. When at dawn and at dusk, a group of women walk with bats on their hands, because they know that once it gets dark, it's a very dangerous place. And so I would urge you to improve that bike trail by putting some decent lighting that will increase the use of that part of the city. It's something that, again, we've been working on it for fifteen-plus years, and also we want to recommend that, don't forget the homeless and the promise that you made ten months ago on enhancing the services to the homeless. It's also on the list for the Building Healthy Communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosalina, followed by Garcia La Medina.
Muy buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Rosalia Vargas. Soy coordinadora del Parque y Centro Comunitario Familias Corazones Verdes. Este es un centro, un lugar donde las familias se reúnen y se relajan, además de que se informan y participan y toman decisiones que afectan a su familia y a su comunidad. Este es un espacio abierto para todos. El día de hoy estoy aquí para comunicarles y hacer una petición. El Parque Familias Corazones Verdes es un lugar que complementa lo que la ciudad tiene como programación. Este lugar se usa para tener foros de seguridad con el Departamento de Policía y la comunidad, foros de salud con la representante del Congreso, así como concejales, entre otros grupos, además de tener una programación regular para las familias para cubrir sus necesidades. Desde su inicio, hace dos años, se ha sostenido con el apoyo de voluntarios en su mayoría y donaciones de la misma comunidad para poder proveer lo que los residentes solicitan. Es por eso que el día de hoy les solicito y hago énfasis que de los fondos excedentes de la ciudad dirijan una cantidad de, por lo menos, dos millones de dólares para cubrir necesidades de este lugar y lugares como el nuestro y otras organizaciones que sirven a la comunidad, dando un gran alivio a las familias en el uso y concepto de la cultura, la salud y el bienestar. Por favor, considérenlo y reflexionen que esta sería una muy buena inversión que traería frutos a largo y a corto plazo para esta ciudad bella y hermosa en nuestro centro comunitario aquí en Santana. Que tengan feliz noche.
Good evening. My name is Rosalia Vargas, coordinator of the Green Hearts Family Park, which is a place where families get together and relax, as well as get informed and participate in the decisions that affect their family and their community. This is an open space for all. Today, I'm here to communicate to you this and make this petition, that the Green Hearts Family Park, this is a place that complements what the city has as their programming. This place is used for safety focuses, focus groups with the police department and the community, health forums with the Congresswoman, Congress Representative, as well as the council people, among other community groups, in addition to having regular family programming. From the beginning, about two years ago, it's been supported with the support of volunteers and donations from the community to provide the needs that the residents request. This is why I request and emphasize that some of the funds, the surplus funds, be directed in an amount no less than $2 million to cover the needs of this place and places such as ours, to serve the community and giving a great relief to the families in the use and the concept of culture, health, and well-being. Please consider this and reflect that this will be a great investment that will bring short-term and long-term benefits to this beautiful city and the beautiful community centers such as this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Garcia La Medina, I believe, and followed by Araceli Robles.
Buenas noches, concejales, señor alcalde. Mi nombre es Garcia La Medina. Soy representante de miembros de la cooperativa de manos unidas, creando arte. Somos un grupo de amas de casas que queremos mejorar nuestra economía y bienestar de nuestras familias. Las metas del grupo son: fomentar el trabajo en equipo de forma que se honra nuestros sueños, de todo despertar, y reunir los conocimientos y talentos de la comunidad, promover el reciclaje y transformar de materiales con creatividad, crear un negocio colectivo sustentable. Venimos a pedir su apoyo para crear un lugar donde podamos vender nuestros productos, y otros grupos apoyan apoyo para que se facilite los trámites para obtener una licencia de negocio, apoyo y capacitación a la cooperativa que se está creando, la venta de nuestros productos, beneficiar a las mujeres de Santana, a nuestras familias y la economía de la ciudad. Nos gustaría mucho que esta petición sea escuchada. Gracias.
Good evening, members of the council and mayor. My name is Garcia La Medina. I'm a resident of Santana and member of the cooperative of Hands Creating Art. We are a group of homemakers who want to improve our home economics and the well-being of our families. The goals of the group are to support working as a group so that everybody's dreams are honored, to awaken and to collect the knowledge and talents of the community, and to provide and to foment the recycling and transformation of materials with creativity, to create a collective and sustainable business. We are here to request your support to create a place where we can sell our goods and other groups, and to support, to facilitate the business license, the obtaining of a business license, to get support and training for the cooperatives that are being created, to sell our products. Selling our products will benefit the women of Santana, our families, and the city's economic development. We would like for this petition to be heard and considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Araceli, followed by Luis Sarmiento.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Araceli Robles, y yo vivo en el vecindario de Lacey. Yo estoy en la etapa de, desde la planeación de Building Healthy Community, desde el California Endowment creyó en nuestra ciudad por el trabajo colectivo que se hace en nuestra comunidad. He sido parte del comité directivo. En este momento, vengo a dar mi apoyo para que aprueben todas las peticiones que les estamos haciendo. Eso no nos lo sacamos de la manga. Este es un trabajo desde el 2009 que empezamos a tener diferentes foros, diferentes actividades con la comunidad. Entonces, es lo que nosotros como comunidad les venimos a pedir, que parte del presupuesto que tienen en este momento, vengan a reforzar el trabajo que empezamos con Building Healthy Community para hacer de nuestra comunidad una comunidad más preparada, que podamos seguir trabajando en conjunto para tener una mejor ciudad. Este ahorita, yo vengo también por las casas de Lacey, porque si ustedes recuerdan, nuestra ciudad es una ciudad de jóvenes, y hay un bache muy grande donde no tenemos tantas actividades para ellas. Este, en el área de Garfield, hay muchos niños que les gusta patinar, entonces, ¿por qué no poner algo así para ellos? Porque nada más, no, no, no todos los niños son para el deporte. Tenemos otro tipo de actividades que ellos necesitan. Entonces, pensemos un poquito en tener más diversidad de actividades para nuestra comunidad, y yo confío en el buen criterio que tienen todos ustedes para tomar en cuenta las opiniones de la comunidad. Esto, todo lo que nosotros les estamos entregando en la carta son recomendaciones de una comunidad que tenemos mucho tiempo trabajando. Gracias, y que pasen buenas noches.
Good evening. I'm Araceli Robles, a member of the Lacey community. I'm here with Building Healthy Communities as well, and we are, I've also been part of the board, and I'm here to support all the petitions that we have been providing for you. This is not something that we came up with just now. This is a work that has started since 2009 with, when we had family, we had community forums and other community events to gather this information. We ask that you budget the surplus that you have to provide for some of these community events, and so that we can have a better prepared community, so that we can work together to better this city. And, for example, in the Lacey community, there are many young people that have no programs. There's a pocket of, that they don't have activities for the kids. Another example is in Garfield, the kids love to skate. Not all kids are going to be going into sports, but we can provide something for the skating, the skaters there around Garfield. There are many activities that the community needs, and we trust your judgment that you provide for these needs, and this recommendation has been a long time coming.
Luis Sarmiento, please.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council, members of the public, Mayor Polido. First of all, I also just like to say what a great opportunity, $10 million surplus. I guess congratulations, and what a great opportunity, again, to meet a lot of the city's unmet needs. I know that other city, a lot of city agencies have presented their proposals to you, and I just want to make sure that you all take the time to create a really balanced proposal. I'd also like to express my support for the Santana Building Healthy Communities list of proposals. Particularly, the third point on that list is for the support of really vital community spaces that really play a crucial role in the city. I think, I don't know how much we could emphasize the importance of community spaces like the Centro Cultural de México, like Corazones Verdes, like the Center OC, like KidWorks, like so many different nonprofit community spaces. The mayor recently mentioned, here at a city council meeting, and many of you are aware, that the Centro Cultural is in the middle of a building acquisition project. After having worked here in Santana over twenty years, and having had to move many times, we are now, we have an $800,000 grant for the acquisition of a building. Sounds like a lot, but really, when you're talking about buying property, it really only gets us about halfway. So this is just one example. Another important thing I wanted to mention, we're collaborating with an organization called the Orange County Community Housing Corporation, which is also a developer of almost forty years here in Orange County, who I'm sure many of you are familiar with. And one of the really great things about partnering with some of these nonprofits is the capacity that we have to implement really big things with really small amounts of money. Our ask today is that you use this opportunity to make a lasting impact in the landscape here in Santana. I think you all really know how important these nonprofit community spaces are, and that we can really have a positive impact through a good administration of this $10 million surplus. The proposal says $2.5 million for community spaces. I know the Centro could use 500, half a million, and I know that the other community spaces on the list could make that money go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Thank you for your work. We have about ten more speakers, and I would just ask folks not to repeat what the previous person said. You know, please, just tell us what you want to tell us, and if it's not long, that's okay too. So with that, Carlos Melendez.
And Mr. Mayor, just let them know as well that no decisions will be made today. So it's just an update to the city council, and so.
No, no hay ninguna decisión que va, no hay un voto hoy sobre esto. Nada más es una cosa que estamos contemplando. So, con eso, a ver si podemos ser más breves, Carlos Melendez, and then Concepción Rodriguez. Carlos Melendez, followed by Concepción Rodriguez.
Muy buenas noches, señores concejales, señor alcalde. Mi nombre es Carlos Melendez. Soy residente de la ciudad de Santana por veinte años, y mi presencia esta noche solamente es para confirmar algo que ya habíamos dicho antes, e incluso aparece en el Plan Estratégico de la ciudad, y es la fuente de agua que se necesita en la plaza, en la Plaza Santana, además de los baños que son necesarios en este lugar. Y además, este, pedirles de que el excedente de recursos que tiene la ciudad, pues, tomen en cuenta las necesidades del centro de Santana. También queremos pedirles de que le asignen algunos fondos para la cuestión de la salud comunitaria, también para la cultura. La cultura es importante, que nosotros tengamos una base cultural para nuestros jóvenes, para nuestros niños, que es el futuro del país, verdad? Entonces, estamos pidiendo de que no se les escape eso, que es para el beneficio de la comunidad, del centro de Santana, la comunidad de la gente joven en el centro de Santana, son las menos tomadas en cuenta para cuestiones culturales. Nuestros niños están creciendo en mucho base cultural, y es necesario que nosotros fomentemos e incrementemos su conocimiento. Entonces, ese es, para ser breve, con lo que dice el señor alcalde. Entonces, ese es, para ser breve con lo que dice el señor alcalde, pues esas son las peticiones que yo traigo nuevamente. Gracias.
Gracias.
Carlos Melendez, I'm a 20-year resident of Santa Ana, and I'm here to confirm what's been said before, and we've said it before in the strategic plan as well, it's contained there. We need to request a water fountain that is needed at Plaza Santa Ana, as well as the restrooms there. We need to ask that some of the surplus money consider improving downtown Santa Ana. We ask that you have this for community health projects as well as cultural projects because our youth and children are the future and they're lacking in this area. So please help us with downtown Santa Ana and to have this strong cultural base for our children.
Carlos. Ya fue Carlos Concepción, y luego después de Concepción, Abraham Medina.
Buenas noches, señor alcalde y concejales. Mi nombre es Concepción Rodriguez y soy del vecindario Lacey y vengo en apoyo de las sugerencias de creando comunidades saludables. Quisiéramos hacerle una petición que se extiendan las horas y días del centro comunitario Garfield para que sean más accesibles para nuestros niños y para los padres que estudiamos para podernos beneficiar del centro con horas después del trabajo y en los fines de semana. También quisiéramos pedirle que el dinero se osado para hacer las juntas comunitarias sean más accesibles y se reduzcan las cuotas. Gracias.
Good evening, my name is Concepción Rodriguez and I'm from the Lacey neighborhood. I'm supporting the things that have been suggested here, building healthy communities. And we'd like to extend the hours and the days that the Garfield Community Center is opened, so it's more accessible to our children and the parents that want to benefit from the center hours after school, after work, and on the weekends. We'd also like to ask some money to be allocated for the community meetings to be more accessible and to reduce the charges, the fees that are charged. Thank you.
Thank you, Abraham. And after Abraham, Ricardo Diaz, or Ricardo Diaz. And after Ricardo, Susana Sandoval. Please go ahead.
Good evening, council members, mayor. I'm here to propose, as part of the SAPDHC collaborative, as part of Santa Ana Boys of Men in Color, we've been working with the city along with jail administrator Christina Holland and Commander Collin, and looking at issues of public safety and how they align with the strategic plan as well as my brother's keeper initiative, which the city took on. So one of the things we are recommending is regarding this subject is funding for community violence intervention workers certification program to train, educate, and empower community members with tools to mitigate risk factors that contribute to violence in addition to serving the reentry population. Training is administered by the Professional Community Intervention Institute, USC, the School of USC, and the University of California, Irvine. We're asking for this funding to go to SAPD in collaboration with Project Kindship of $60,000. For the second thing on this issue is funding for the actual hiring of community intervention workers, community-based violence intervention, reentry service providers that can respond to crisis, can be in a form of intervention, provides reentry services, trauma care, family support, long-term case management services to youth and families affected by violence of gangs and incarceration. As this would be in collaboration with SAPD, with collaboration with community-based organizations for $100,000. So this goes on to our second and last issue, which is youth need support systems such as diversion programs for eligible youth, such as community conferencing. So these things we've been speaking with the committee, and there is a need to have funding for alternatives to detention for youth in Santa Ana that are qualified for those alternatives. So we propose diversion programs, $100,000 for diversion programs and $100,000 for community conferencing, which is a restorative justice-based alternative to detention, which could fulfill that strategic plan implementation as well as my brother's keeper initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Abraham. Ricardo followed by Susana Sandoval.
Buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Ricardo Diaz, me acompañan mi hija Viga Il Cruz y Josué Cruz. Yo soy miembro del grupo de jardineros del Parque de Familias Corazones Verdes. Estoy aquí apoyando y dando reconocimiento al trabajo y que están haciendo comunidades saludables. El proyecto de jardinería significa para mí un gran cambio en mi familia y en mí que nos ha permitido mantenernos unidos aprendiendo a cultivar frutas y verduras. El estar unidos aprendimos a cultivar y al cual también ayuda a muchas otras familias. Esto también nos está enseñando una mejor manera de tener buena alimentación y ser más saludables. Y como ejemplo, mis hijos en este año no han visitado a su doctor por algún problema de salud gracias a estos cambios que hemos hecho. Y esto al igual es beneficioso desde los infantes hasta las personas de tercera edad. Mis compañeros jardineros y yo usamos estos pequeños espacios que no son los apropiados pero que nos motivan a buscar un terreno más grande para llevar nuestra experiencia a un nivel más grande. También este grupo de jardineros colaboramos con otros grupos de jardineros en reuniones para crear el proyecto de una microbranja. Es por eso que hoy vengo a solicitarles que dediquen fondos del excedente para un terreno público de medio acre, lo cual tendría un costo de 750,000 dólares con arrendamiento de 60 años. Este proyecto sería administrado por nosotros como comunidad para el bien de nuestras familias y el beneficio para toda la comunidad en general. Muchas gracias por su atención, Dios los bendiga.
Good evening, I'm here with my children. I'm also a member of the gardening group at Parque Familias Corazones Verdes. I'm here supporting the recognition of the work that Building Healthy Communities is doing. The gardening project for me has been a great change for my family because it has allowed us to be, to keep together, to learn to plant fruits and vegetables, and also to help many other families as well. This has also taught us a better, to have a better nutrition and better eating and to be healthier. As an example, my children this last year have not visited the doctor's office once for any health problems, and this is due to the changes that we've made. In addition to the benefits to the children, it also benefits the elderly as well. Our, the people there, the gardeners, and I use these small spaces, small spaces that are not very appropriate, but they motivate us to look for a better and a bigger plot to take our experience to a bigger, to the next level. This group of gardeners, we're working together with another group of gardeners to get together to create also a micro-farm. This is why today I'm asking you to dedicate funds of the surplus to a public land, to about half an acre, which would have a cost of $750,000 for a 60-year lease. This project would be administered by us as a community for the benefit of our families and the benefit of the entire community. Thank you very much for listening and God bless you.
Thank you. Ian De Lucian, after, go ahead, Susana. After you, Ian, or Ian De Valucian, and then Frank Ben Hamo. Go ahead.
Good evening. I am a resident of Santa Ana for 25 years plus and co-chair for the community-based organizations Santa Ana Healthy Neighborhoods Alliance and the Community United for Environmental Justice. We are partners in the Project Homelessness Coalition and stand in solidarity and support for Civic Center, Access Center, and the comprehensive proposed multifaceted center. It is now more than 10 months that the council approved funding for services at Civic Center and awarded this funding to Mercy House to establish much-needed basic human services for our population there. The coalition is working with Mercy House on the Civic Center Access Center, and at the most recent meeting with Mr. Larry Haynes and James, everyone is in agreement with the operational design and structure. It has also been several months since the City Public Safety Committee gave the directive to establish a location at the Civic Center for the approved services. Now is the time to establish the location and put the approved monies to work for moving our homeless population at Civic Center out of poverty and to allocate the additional funding needed to assure the success of the multifaceted center. By implementing these services, you will demonstrate that the council does take action to serve our homeless at Civic Center. Your leadership ignites the work plan and operations, and, council, you can demonstrate that you are a full partner in the coalition. Everyone wins. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susana. Now Ian, followed by Frank.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Stay with me, we're almost to the end. I know it's been a long night. My name is Ian De Lucian. I am part of the coalition that Susana has referenced, it's Project Homelessness, a grassroots movement. I'm from a 501(c)(3) nonprofit called The Heart of Delight. I'm a founder and executive director, and our primary work has been to support the homeless community at Civic Center here in Santa Ana. And through the work that we've done, we've become intimately connected with the needs of this particular community. And as I have been sitting and hearing about all of the needs of the city, there are a lot of needs in a community, but there is one particular community that is in most dire need, that there are people dying on the streets because they have nowhere else to go. They have nowhere else to die but on the streets. So, in the spirit of forming a coalition, we have gone around the community and gathered key players in the community, including downtown Santa Ana, Ryan Smoller being a representative, also church representatives, also nonprofits, working with Mercy House, and setting up a meeting with Larry Haynes last Friday and speaking about the check-in center and seeing what we can do to improve upon that, adding an addendum to that, as well as residents and community organizations in the city of Santa Ana, and the only missing component to this is the city of Santa Ana. And so we want to invite the city of Santa Ana to be part of this coalition to solve this dire problem that the city has. And what you see before you, if you have the packet that I had passed out, on the left is a formal RFP proposal, and on the right are three different scenarios in which funds can be allocated. The first two scenarios are 250 grand, and the third scenario is for 500 grand. And the first one is Project Oasis, which expands on the check-in center. It's still in an outside setting. The second one is the multifaceted center, which Susana had referenced, and that is the same concept but within a facility, and then you expand that into a multifaceted habitat, which then basically provides for sleeping accommodations for, say, 250 to 300 homeless residents. And what kind of services are we talking about? Five categories. We're talking about essential services in terms of storage, restrooms, laundry, showers, healthy food for humans, as well as pet food and supplies. We're talking another category, communications and technology, cellular phones, computer lab, Wi-Fi access, a cloud document backup system, an appointment keeper to help people who have legal and medical appointments, as well as individual empowerment, job development, holistic health and nutrition education, substance detox.
Ian, you're out of time. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, followed by Madeline Spencer.
Actually, Frank had to celebrate his anniversary today, so I'd like to speak for him, if that's okay.
Typically, we don't allow that, so let me just have Madeline come down, because if I allow that, then I have to allow it everywhere else. But Madeline, if you're here, please come on down. Thank you.
Good evening, council and city staff. You know what, I know that a lot of times people don't grade city government for their job, and there'd be a lot of different categories to have to grade, but I actually want to give a small report card on a couple of things that I think are important. And I do give an A for fiscal management. You're doing a good job, David Cavassos. But when it comes to collaborative design for this city and its effectiveness, I'd give it an F. For organizational evaluation, I'd give it an F. You've come up in communications, so I'd give you a D. And for consistency, I'd give you an F. I have a quote, I love Ralph Waldo Emerson, and he says, "A foolish consistency is the hobgoblin of little minds, adored by little statesmen, philosophers, and diviners." And one of the things that I learned from an elder in our community, which you guys know as Bud Warwick, he actually gave me a book at the last, when we were doing strategic planning. The book was actually called Grassroots Leadership, and the book was about the economic downturn that happened in the 1990s, and it talked about specific key areas in California business, government, education, and community that formed in joint ventures to make Silicon Valley what it is today. Also, there's a series of success stories about Florida, Ohio, Kansas, and Texas, and something that all those stories had in common is that people learned to do collaborative design when the economy was down, and it made their cities very successful. I know you guys have a GROW conference coming up, and you are going to be talking about it, and I just want you to know in set theory, the community is the more comprehensive category, not the people who sit here or the developers. So I just hope that it is remembered, and I will be at that GROW conference to check that out. And I am very excited that you do have a joint agreement that is being looked at with the schools, because I think it's very important. And the other thing is that the county has put a mobile social service center out at Civic Center once a week, which is a great step forward. It probably needs to be done more, but they've made a step forward with that, and it's the turn of the city to do its job and do diligence when it comes to the homeless, since they did turn down the shelter proposal. And the last thing is fiestas patrias this year. There was nothing for children there. I don't know what happened. We have an issue with some of the events that are going down in the downtown, and we've noticed that for some reason, people will not collaborate with the groups that are in the downtown that have been asking for that collaboration on these events, and that needs to change. That's the last thing I have to say for today.
Thank you, Madeline. Thank you. With that, Dylan Thompson, or Jorge Arriando, I believe it is, at 112 Barrigan Street. Please go ahead.
Hello again, council staff. Just here as part of the Project Homelessness Coalition that was mentioned earlier, not to repeat too much. It's a happy accident that we have this surplus, so let's make the best of it. But, yeah, I mean, I'm here to talk about the check-in center, and it's definitely something that's been delayed for months, and I think it's long overdue. I would commend council member Amesqua for talking about possibly spending some money on homeless shelter or other services, and other council members that shared that kind of view. It's definitely long overdue, and I would, I just want to say that this coalition that we're working on looked at the original agreement for the check-in center and expanded on it by including a lot more of the homeless community's voices, and that includes like a schedule that really accommodates for the homeless community's schedule when they have to wake up. Of course, they're woken up around four in the morning by, usually by the police, so they can clear out, basically before the county workers come in. So it needs to accommodate for the conditions that we're putting onto the homeless community. So other improvements to the check-in center are to hire within the homeless community, to encourage empowerment and participation, to provide for a variety of different storage means rather, and then also to provide showers and hand washing, because if we're trying to encourage people to like go out and find jobs and stuff, you might as well go, make this pilot program shine and really give them a chance to explore that opportunity. And so, most of these changes are within the original budget. However, let's just make this thing work, let's make the homeless community want to go there, and... And so any additional allocation can only improve it. Like Ian was saying earlier, there are a lot of different scales of facilities that could be rolled out. So I would also like to support the Building Healthy Communities, a spending platform. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Frank Benhamin, I believe it is, and then Jorge. Are you Jorge?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and Councilmembers and staff. As a resident of Santa Ana, Ward 2, and a professional designer in landscape architecture and urban design, at a local firm, I urge you to strongly consider allocating a portion of the remaining $10 million in surplus monies from the city's budget to safe active infrastructure, specifically. And if I were to describe Santa Ana in one word, it would be potential. The embodiment of said word is the youth. My recent collaboration with Santa Ana Active Streets Coalition has allowed me to get a glimpse of the great work they do, and have done not only with the youth, but with and for our city. Working with them for these past few months on the Pacific Electric Bicycle Trail Extension, also known as the Maple Bicycle Trail Extension, I have begun to get to know them, their aspirations, and their desire to continue to see this great city thrive. We have built on the city's general plan in selecting our site, which has allowed us to go through the design process, and in doing so have delineated a feasible trail extension, which will require minimal construction and intervention, and takes into consideration the inclusion of safe routes to nearby schools as well as nearby neighborhoods. They have shown me software that I hadn't heard of, or to visualize our design ideas. They have allowed me to come in contact again with the beauty of creativity and richness of ideas and solutions that spontaneity, a willingness to learn, and a desire to give back allow for, even at such a young age. We have already produced mapping and sections of our conceptual design, and are currently working on a physical model and survey to canvass the area to gather more data. Esteemed Councilmembers and Honorable Mayor, you are all and have been instrumental in the shaping of our city. I urge you once more to consider this allocation of funds as a great necessity for our working community, and as an investment in our future generations. These recommendations have already been submitted by Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities Initiative, and it is clearly linked to the improvement in quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, followed by Araceli Robles. Frank, Frank not here? Araceli, are you here?
Ya pasó.
Ya pasó, okay. Gracias. So with that, then, let me bring it back to Council for discussion.
Do you have a presentation there?
Sorry, go ahead.
It's going to be short, but I think it's important to go through it. Let me begin with congratulations to the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and all the council members for your leadership, all the city employees, the businesses, and of course, our residents, the Santa Ana team. We do have good news. The goal today is to discuss and obtain additional consensus. As Councilmember Martinez mentioned, we don't expect a decision today, but we think it's really important that we learn more about your priorities. And I want to emphasize that these are one-time expenditures, and that they're not ongoing, and so we need to keep that in mind. Next page. We do have good news. The budget surplus has grown to 11 million, 250,000 dollars. This is on top of the 14 million dollars last year, so we're about 25 million dollars. And I want to emphasize to the council and the community that this is in addition to 20 million dollars more in general funds, dozens of new positions, and we did very well in our grant funds. And of course, the CIP is very robust. The schedule that we have presented is to get your input today, learn from you in terms of priorities. We do recommend that we have a decision, we hope, from the mayor and council in October, because we got to get to work. But I do want to, again, discuss the processes, that these are funds that were not anticipated, and so we do need a strong consensus and a two-thirds majority. So a 4-3 will not work, we need at least five votes. I will go through, starting on page five, the items that were mentioned, that we thought would be part of the one-year allocation based on council input and where we're at to date, and then, of course, future years' needs. I want to emphasize that the needs are very vast, because unfortunately, we haven't kept up to pace. The last 10 years have not been good for Santa Ana in terms of additions. We deferred maintenance, we deferred buying vehicles, we deferred technology purchases, and we do have this opportunity, but it's going to take a couple, three years to deal with the needs of the city of Santa Ana. We do have the allocations there for Calle Cuatro. There's been a focus to make sure that we have a pension stability fund. That's an issue that's never going to go away in our lives. We do have a branding study that's been identified. Facility repairs equal to 3 million, 845,000, buying new vehicles, page six. We have many items in the Parks Department to have basic safety needs. In this category is about 5 million, 201,000 dollars. There's been an emphasis on Cabrillo Park Tennis Courts, the skate park, not to say where the skate park's going to be, but I've been out touring skate parks, very important for Santa Ana, is a big need, and we have 800,000 dollars identified. There was a discussion about the Birch Park Restrooms and the fence, joint use facilities like Godenas and the track facility. In the area planning and building, on page seven, we need to do a general plan, there's lots of money in there for that. A metro study to make sure we complete that plan along that corridor. I really believe that, and I think I've heard this from many people, that Sartek is the gateway to our city, is the first impression we need to maintain and bring that facility up to what it needs to be to make a good impression, especially with the streetcar coming in the future. Tremendous opportunity. We need a GIS system. Our police department needs body cameras, we need to put money in there for that. Again, talented people, technology, about 3 million dollars to implement the technology master plan, which I think is a great return on the investment. The grand total for year one, about 17 million dollars. Future years, 43 million dollars. We have, as we mentioned, 11 million, 250,000, which leaves a shortfall for the year one allocations. There's other needs that have been identified this evening and recently by the council as late as today. I do want to emphasize that we have many properties along Bristol. Most of them are owned by the city, but were purchased with transportation funds, and when they're sold, they got to go back into transportation funds. There were some properties, though, that were bought with community development block grants. And if we sell those properties, they can be used, the dollars from those funds, for many of the items that I just mentioned. So the skate park, parks issues, those things. And we have one property that has been discussed for sale in the near future, that's worth about 2.1 million dollars. The other item that I've mentioned, that we've reported, but we want to emphasize today that we have a very healthy reserve of 20%. And when we were going to the public to lower the tax for the UT but broaden it and make sure everybody pays their fair share, we had a provision in place, because of the uncertainty of that election, that we would have 3.8 million dollars available to mitigate any impact on that. The good news is, that was passed overwhelmingly. So if you take the 2.1, add the 3.8, all of a sudden, you have 17 million dollars that can be done, which would leave a balance of about 43 million dollars. I know there's going to be debate about this. My personal feeling is, we should do everything and find a way to fund that, make that a priority. And a rule of thumb is, you need about 10% of the balance to fund it on an ongoing basis. So of a 225 million dollar budget, not counting the non-general funds, if we could generate about 4 million dollars, we could actually fund about 43 million dollars. And we're going through that exercise now. We're going to get a credit report. We have a much improved credit condition, and I want to emphasize that. On the last page, number nine, are some of the issues that were discussed. More joint use programs, more discussion about that. Santa Ana Tax Free Day, Orange County Marathon, Santiago Creek feasibility study, more money towards unfunded liabilities, voter registration campaign to get people to vote and to be educated about the importance of that. More placemaking. I do want to emphasize that in the parking plan, there will be art placemaking and beautification as part of the downtown parking plan, so that's important. I also want to emphasize that the Willowood Golf Course is really important. There's absolutely no reason whatsoever for Garden Grove to own a golf course in the middle of Santa Ana, and we should figure out a way to work with Garden Grove to make that for open space. Obviously, there's more homeless issues. The mayor mentioned one Broadway Plaza and others. South Main infrastructure amenities is another high priority. And again, to the point that Councilwoman Martinez has made over and over again, the importance of capital deferred maintenance plan. And so those are there. We heard from the Building Healthy Community about more needs. With that, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council, that concludes our presentation.
All right, with that, any questions of the city manager? Well, since you don't like to go first, let me...
Whatever, Mr. Mayor, I just want to be very brief.
I am kidding, I'm kidding. Go ahead, just a joke, just a joke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to be brief, because I had a very robust conversation with Jorge yesterday, and I just want to encourage my colleagues to have a conversation with the city manager or Jorge, who is putting all the numbers together in regards to the allocations. At this time, only two members of the city council up here have actually had the conversation with him, so that we could have actually a real conversation at the next meeting when we make, you know, the recommendation to approve this. We have one month, and so I'm just hoping that you all will make the phone call and/or sit down with them to give your points of view, so that we can really drill down on the amount, there's only certain amount of money, and to take into consideration that we only have one-time dollars. These are one-time, and so I think it's important for us to realize that and understand that there are only certain things that we can do, and if we so choose to move forward and do things that are ongoing, it's going to affect our base budget. And do we have the dollars, as it pertains to the base budget, to continue some of these programs or projects? So I just want my colleagues to keep that in mind. And lastly, just want to thank the Building Healthy Communities for, you know, coming here today and advocating for public health and amenities and placemaking, and all of this is down there. And I believe many of these things that they discuss, I think they really can happen. And again, it's just really going to take this council to understand that it is only one-time dollars, so any of the things that you guys all ask for, you have to understand that if it is continuing, you need to realize that it's going to affect the base budget. And that's a bigger conversation. So things that are one-time items, like placemaking and other things of that nature, we possibly can be supportive of. So I just want the audience as well to keep that in mind, because we only have one-time dollars here. If it were really up to me, there's a lot of things that I want to get done that are one-time, but if it were up to me, I would have put all this money into an account and focus on deferred maintenance. And so whatever the million dollars is, and whatever money we receive next year, just as we've done with our reserve, it was all done with one-time money. And if we really want to fix our facilities, if it, whether it be our parks or our city facilities, and we really want to assure that it gets done in an equitable fashion, you need to have more than just 2 million or 3 million dollars, and just do a very short fix, knowing that you don't have sustainable dollars, to continue to maintain all these facilities. And so I just want to keep, for us to keep that in mind, that what are our real priorities? And again, just wanting to thank our staff for putting this all together. We have some really tough decisions to make and really drill down on how we're going to spend these dollars. With that being said, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let me make a comment, and then, you know, please, let's continue. And this is more of a comment and a question, maybe a direction. I've been talking to Mayor Pro Tem here with some thoughts. And a couple of thoughts is, you know, we are talking about one-time monies, but we do have this 3.8 million dollars, which is one-time money. So if we're going to consider this and there's need, is it an appropriate time to maybe put that into the pot, so that the 11 billion goes higher? Just a question for right now, but a policy decision we should contemplate. The other is that, you know, remember the, you know, on Bristol Street, we've got the sale of property. I know it's one-time money as well, but that's 2.1 million. So if we had to add the 3.8 to the 2.1, you know, at that point, we're getting close to 6 million, and you add that to the 11 million, now you're close to the 17, which we had originally. So I don't know if there's any thoughts right now, but if there are, I think it's an appropriate time. Just thoughts on this concept, please.
Right, right. Along those lines, I know our city manager mentioned we do have a very robust reserve right now. I'm not saying that we spend all of it, but if we can look at maybe a portion of it, I really would want to at least focus on the major needs of the 17 million. I think we have to find a way to at least fix the things that are, you know, need to be fixed immediately. So if we can look at that, I think, kind of along what the mayor was saying, we do want to fund these things that are, need to be fixed immediately.
Thank you. Councilwoman and mayor, we definitely, at the staff, recommend that we use those funds that you just outlined. The reason the Economic Uncertainty Fund is because we do have a reserve of 20%. We also have very robust property taxes. The UT did pass, so we want to rename it an Economic Investment and Uncertainty Fund, where we could invest in Sartek, for example, get higher rents, and then that fund would replenish for other needs. So, Mr. Mayor and members of council, we're recommending that those funds be added to the surplus allocation.
I know we're not voting today, but would a show of hands be appropriate as we come back? Mayor Pro Tem, please.
I was going to mention that, as you see the line item for the 3.8 million, which is going to be considered now an Economic Investment Fund, there's a bullet right below it that recommends that that money go towards Sartek, which I think is a good direction to go in, because if that gets rehabbed, that means that that money invested can be recovered through rents and improvements there. So to the extent we look at what, or we consider what the council member said, Councilmember Martinez said about these being one-time funds, and she's asking us to be disciplined, which is what I would ask as well, let's look at monies invested that give us a return. So if we can find ways to invest these monies into areas that will either fund themselves, create additional funds later, that just makes a lot more sense to me. It's a wise way to spend it, it's the prudent way to spend it. We'd love to spend it on everything there is, but as you see the column on the right, that's almost 50 million dollars in need. And that's just baseline stuff. That's just, you know, lighting, sidewalks, pathways, air conditioning. I mean, if you see some of the air conditioning needs in some of our libraries and community centers, after the summer that we just went through, and for kids to be in, in a stifling environment, and for us not to address those needs, look, I'd love to give money to every worthy cause there is out there, but at least a baseline standard is what we should be looking at tonight.
Thank you. Again, precisely the point. In the last meeting, the Public Works Director mentioned that we could actually raise our rents by about 450,000 dollars if we made these improvements at Sartek. And with the streetcar coming, 250 million dollar project, Opayna, being about 1.5 billion to 2 billion dollars in investment, and this is the first point of entry to Santa Ana, so I think this would be a great investment.
All right, more thought? If not, we'll continue with our agenda.
I'm taking that as consent. If you have to do that.
Yes, you're not hearing no from anybody. So with that, let's go on. Madam Clerk, that would bring us to...
Mr. Mayor, on our second study session item...
Go ahead.
This is something that I asked to come before us, but just in the interest of time, and I know this has been continued quite often, the reality is, is that we're possibly going to fund this with these one-time dollars. It's just the schedule, so I think that it's best that Fred, our planning director, just emailed us, the presentation, and not having to go over his presentation.
That's fine, and then we can give feedback.
Yes, and we'll give feedback to him.
So, did our planning director hear that?
Yes, it's Fred.
You met Fred?
No, our planning director. I met Hassan.
Right. She just, on the presentation, she just wants you to email it to us, and we'll give you feedback.
I will be happy to do so.
Yes.
Can we just do it as a receive and file?
Yes, receive and file, yes.
Receive and file in the council agenda item.
And email the presentation to us.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there any opposition to that? Seeing none, we will do that. And now, we're about to go back into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, before you go into closed session, I just want to reconsider a vote that I took, just my messy notes. I put a no on 75(c), it was supposed to be a no somewhere else, that I did cast, and so it was an error in my part. I'm fully supportive of 75(c), and I met with the applicants.
Do you guys remember that loud no?
And it was a very loud no because of Bristol, just Bristol itself.
Can we make it a loud yes?
A loud, yes, yes.
All right, so should I reopen it, Madam Clerk, in order to have her vote?
No, it is not needed. A revote is not needed. It will be noted on the minutes.
Was that loud enough?
Yes.
All right. Yes, Ms. City Manager.
Mayor, I was sorry, I was interrupted with very good news that I think we should announce, because we just found out, and I think people will be very happy about it, and I don't want to take someone else's good work, it belongs to all the council, but it relates very closely to capital needs, and so I'd like to invite our Public Works Director, Fabulous Fred, to make the announcement.
This is fresh off the press, Fred?
Fresh off the press, yes.
You got it.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Four months ago, we applied for three active transportation projects, and we received the word this afternoon that we were approved, all three projects are approved, and we're getting the grant. We're getting $11.7 million grant for...
You got to say that loud.
Can you say it again and say what it's for again, please, Fred?
Active transportation.
I know. What streets? For folks at home?
Active transportation projects. There are three projects. One is San Ana and 50th Street Protected Bike Lane, Edinger Protected Bike Lane, Civic Center Bike Boulevard. The three projects, all three were approved, and we would move forward to it as soon as possible.
And this is from what source? What did we find?
State.
State of California.
State of California, yes.
Good. Thank you. So that doesn't make the $43 million come down, that's simply his money that makes other parts of the city better.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, you know, just state for the record that, you know, the amount of money over the past four years in return to active transportation, we've gone over the $30 million mark, and that's really fairly new for the city of San Ana, and so it's just to tell the community that we've made a major commitment to active transportation by applying grants, and thanking Fred and his staff, but as well, most recently, wanting to thank Jorge, because I've been bugging him to bug our city manager, to then city manager, to bug our other staff, and our Public Works staff have done a tremendous job, you know, whether it be TEG or others of how to actually apply for these grants, and I'm wanting to also thank Cory Wilkerson, when we made the decision to hire an active transportation coordinator, I think is certainly paying dividends, and we're starting to see that. And so I'm just wanting to thank Fred and his entire staff for the great work that they've been doing.
All right, what I would like to suggest now, we're almost wrapped up with our council meeting, if we may, let's just hold the city manager's report and council comments. I know we're going to go back into closed session, and then we'll come back out. All right, so that, let's temporarily go into closed session.
I have questions.
We've already had all the comments that I have cards. If you have a question, come down, you can talk to the clerk.